Good deal.
And for...
Okay. Got to meet with him in Washington, huh?
Yeah, he said, "I'll meet with three or four people," and I brought him out, and I grabbed John Martin. I said, "Come on." And with RS 2477s. Very interesting conversation.
Good deal. I knew it was worth sending you back there.
Well, I...
Was he apprised at all of what was going on, and was this all news to him?
I'll fill you in, but I kind of put him on the spot twice. In front of everybody, and it was, uh...
Put him on the heater, huh?
They laughed, and then they were kind of silent, so it was... But I didn't hold anything back.
I think we'll hear a lot about 2477s.
Yes, we will. Yeah, we got that set.
But he's a... I like him better than the last one.
Good. A little more approachable than our last boy, huh?
Yes.
Good. Good deal.
Are you on, James?
I don't know.
I can't hear anything. Really can't hear you.
It may not be working.
I can hear you okay.
You're standing in prison.
That battery.
Let me...
It's always something with them, man, from traffic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What happened with the conservation easement last week?
We didn't sign the letter of non-opposition. We discussed it with him and told him that we weren't certain about conservation easements and how they commit land for eternity. And he said, "Yeah, but in the past, you've signed the non-opposition." And we decided this time, we weren't going to sign the non-opposition letter, so we just let him leave here with nothing.
Sounds like popcorn.
You've got something working there, by golly. At least we know those speakers are working.
Okay. Ready for the minutes?
Yes, I had a chance to... I took the opportunity to read the minutes. As far as I could ascertain, they were in order. And so I will make the motion that the proceedings of the Board of County Commissioners in Mazumah County, March 5, 2018, be approved.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve the minutes for the proceeding of the Board of Commissioners from Mazumah County, March 5, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's like Lynn's up.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Lynn. We're good, how are you?
I'm gonna get the round today.
Is that a girl?
Oh, yeah.
How are ya?
Feel better.
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
John's already seen them.
Everything's looking good. Now, I've got one deal on this Mankas Brewing. That's the people that moved across the road into the old kayak, into the kayaks building and stuff.
The old, out on the front edge road.
Right, there, you go off the highway where she had...
On the left.
Yeah, on the north side of the road.
The back around.
Yeah, we've had, uh... I've had numerous phone calls from a property owner that's on the south side of that highway with noise. And I know LeAnn has been contacted. And we were, we've been trying to get measurements on the decibels of... They have bands and music that comes out on that patio, which is on the south side of their building. And apparently, it may get worse, the complaints may get worse, because there's an RV park being built across the river from where this property owner is on his property. And the noise level, I guess, from some of the music and some of the functions out there is becoming a nuisance, according to them. LeAnn knows about it, and I think we're trying to take and measure the decibels of the sound coming across the road from that place to this person's property. So I know that's not just, I mean, we can't, I'm not...
Unfortunately, it has nothing to do with the liquor license.
Right.
But, um, yeah, could duly noted.
We need to keep this on our radar, because they're getting... It's been going on ever since they moved over there and started in over there. I've had calls and complaints from this person, so...
Do you communicate with them when you give them their liquor license?
We mail it, we give it to the state. We do not communicate. Everything's done via mail.
Right, it's not something that we would deny this for.
No.
There'd need to be a violation or something like that.
Right.
But I was just thinking, maybe you could give them the heads up.
But if they were violating noise ordinances, that could, in essence, be a violation, could it not?
Right.
I mean, if they're...
They're gonna need to...
No, I understand, but we do have, we do have some authority to say, "Hey, you need to recognize your neighbors and your neighborhood, and if you're causing a noise nuisance there to people that live near you, you need to..."
Would they not need to go through the sheriff?
They'd need to go through something, probably the sheriff.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be something that we could allege land use violations or whatnot. But yes, there'd need to be a violation if we were gonna hold this thing up.
How do you do sound tests? I mean, there's...
I think you have a decibel meter that you get out there with somebody with a certified...
You hire a third party to do a small reading?
Yeah, decibel.
Just kind of like what Kendra Morgan did.
Yeah, what we've done on the gas line on Northwest Pipeline.
So they would have to do a reading later or whatever.
Yeah, whenever they're...
I got it free. You can get it free on your app, on your phone.
The guy that owns the property, he's done it. He's been at his boundary line with his phone, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's...
Admissible evidence?
Yeah, I don't think your phone, his phone is not admissible, but he's done it. And he's shown the noise. Well, I'll talk to LeAnn today, because LeAnn's well aware of this, so we'll, we'll... Okay.
And are you fine with...
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, we can't, we're not gonna mess with it.
The one other thing that we didn't have, so I didn't put the dates on the Yoot Mountain Roundup. That was the 7th through the 9th. Sorry. Is that...
And we don't even have that here, do we?
Yes, we do. It's the third one down.
They were in last week and should have read that.
And I believe that's the 7th.
I think it is, I think you're right. It's that first weekend in June.
The 7th through the 9th.
Yeah, no, not for the second weekend, yeah, 7th, 8th, 9th.
All right, I would move to approve the renewal liquor license for Smitty's Liquors at PO Box 839 Cortez, Colorado, as well as the Mankas Brewing Company located in PO Box 788, Mankas, Colorado, as well as a special events permit for the Yoot Mountain Roundup for the 7th, excuse me, June 7th, 8th, and 9th of 2018.
I'll second that.
Then moved in second to approve the renewal, for renewal liquor license for Smitty's Liquor in Cortez, Mankas Brewing Company in Mankas, and application for a special events permit for the Yoot Mountain Roundup Incorporated for June 7th, 8th, and 9th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's pretty open.
Right there on that... Oh, that's right.
It doesn't need my money, you know, it's a roll.
And then on this one, it's a little different. It is right there.
There's a...
There's a...
Did anybody have frost at their house this morning?
Oh, did you see that fog roll? That fog was wild. It'd roll in, and then it reminded me of being on the coast of Oregon. We were down there messing around one day, out visiting my son. It looked like a rainstorm coming at you, just this great big wall. And it just came, went across, and went up the mountains, and then just disappeared. Same kind of stuff out here, it was wild.
Weird.
Yeah.
It's kind of cool. It's kind of weird, you drive down into it, you're like, "Really, I go in there?"
Okay, we're ready for a weather update, Mr. Andrews.
Hello, James. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are ya?
What time did that fog happen?
Well, it was going on by 7 o'clock this morning when I...
I was gonna say it was 7:15 when I saw it.
Yeah, between 7 and 8.
Yeah, did have a lot of frost in my car this morning.
Well, my weather station said it was 95% humidity out this morning.
What's that?
95% humidity out this morning. Yeah, on my weather station.
You could see the inversion as soon as it got daylight.
Didn't the 60% forecast for rain this weekend didn't amount to anything more than a trace. Let's start with the 2018 precipitation summary.
That one?
That one, yeah. Got a new feature in there to show you. You can see that we're sliding backwards halfway decent January at 85% of normal, still below normal. But February, we slid backward again, only 33% of normal at .31 inches of precipitation. So for the year, we'd started at 85%, now we've slipped to 58%. Sneak preview from March, I've only reported a trace so far, so officially, it's still 0% for the first half of the month, which would mean if we got no more precipitation at all for March, we'd slip down to 37% for the yearly average. It's a...
Going the wrong way.
Tough going this winter. New feature added was the, uh... I broke out snowfall by a month and by season. So in the snowfall you see here, its liquid equivalent is excluded in the precipitation. Thought it'd be useful to break out the snowfall. So for February, just 2.3 inches, you can see normal for the month is 7.5 inches. So over 5 inches below normal for February, only 30% of normal. And for the season, it looks even more drastic. I've only measured 5.4 inches of the snow so far. Our seasonal average here in Cortez, the Weather Service tells me 36 inches. So over 30 inches below normal, only 15% of our normal seasonal snowfall so far. Not much to speak of at all. So in the 13-month summary... There we go. There's February down there. Last February certainly was a more generous month, and we'd started out great last year. But the last five months have been below normal for precipitation. Going back to June, seven of the last nine months have been below normal for precipitation. The only truly wet month we've had in the past year was May. We're over 200% of normal for that month. Rather reflected in the yearly percentages. Started out very nice last year, and through the year, we kept slipping, slipping, slipping with those below normal months. By the end of the year, we were down to a 90% average for the entire year of 2017. And not a promising start for 2018. We started 85%, down to 58% at the end of this month, at the end of February. And yeah, March is, so far, is looking as dry as September, October, October, November, and December, rather. The 30-day forecast is not filled with much good news at all. Temperature is above normal for the Four Corners region. Precipitation below normal. And that same pattern is reflected in the 90-day forecast. Once again, well above normal temperatures and precipitation below normal. More than a 40% chance of below normal precipitation for the next 90 days. And the drought, this is really starting to get, show up in our drought analysis. The red area, that is extreme drought. So the Four Corners now in extreme drought, the second worst drought category. Wildfires, it's starting to show up, wildfire danger too. Right now, the Clayton Fire is going on in extreme northeast New Mexico. It's crossed over into southeast Colorado and the western tip of the Oklahoma Panhandle. So that area there has a 23,000-acre wildfire going on right now. But yeah, the west, the southwest is starting to suffer significantly this pronounced winter drought we've had.
You know, it's amazing that it's showing us that red. When places in Arizona, they said, "Haven't had any rain since August." That Arizona would be more red. Maybe just because it's dry all the time.
Maybe they're more desert than we, maybe they're just not that severe compared. They don't get that much annual precipitation.
Yeah, northeast Arizona, they're on the res. It certainly is a very pronounced desert country there with a desert climate.
I had a whole commissioner tell me that they're gonna start selling a lot of cattle off of reservation, because they don't have the water.
They don't have any water going into the summer season.
Yeah, I was wondering about ranchers here in Mazumah County. Are they starting to make decisions like that?
Yes.
I haven't been out to the sale barn.
I have. Yes.
The Forest Service starting to talk, cutting numbers up on the...
Yes, they are.
Are they already? I'll make some of them sell some stuff.
On the eastern end of town, we've got the fire danger rating. And I've seen the low sign on there for the longest time. I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, the fire departments haven't paid any attention to that, because I don't think it's low right now.
With as much drought as we've had, and given that we're in extreme drought right now, it makes me wonder just what, if that's a corrected assessment of our fire danger situation.
They just haven't changed it, I bet you're right.
And for the snow tail situation, you can see that northern Colorado has been much better out than southern Colorado. 54% of normal here statewide, oh, in Rio Grande, 57%. Statewide, 72%. As a way of comparison, the entire state of Montana, the water equivalent of their snowpack is 137% of normal.
I talked to a commissioner for Montana. So last year, they, you know, the whole state burned up. I mean, that's...
Yeah, they were in extreme drought.
And they were so dry. And now, it's, there's so much snow, where this commissioner lives, he's a rancher, that they're having a hard time even plowing it.
No, it's like we were last winter, we had, what, 100 and some odd percent of normal last winter. We had tremendous, and here we are, the flip, and it seemed like just the reverse of what they had.
He said, "Last year, they had to feed, because they didn't have any grass. This year, they have to feed, because they have too much snow."
Too much snow. Can't wait for it.
Yeah, like Jan, January 2017 or something like, we're over 300% of normal just for that month. It was a really great wet start to the winter.
I was at the DWCD meeting on Thursday night, and Kenny Curtis gave the snowpack report and what they're looking at and how they're gauging everything. And he said, "As long as they can stay in that 54% of normal runoff for the reservoir, there'll be a full irrigation season for everybody for the MBI and as well as the full service farmers." So that's a, that's a real key, real key number right there.
That's promising, although we are coming...
If we start going below that, then...
But you know what worries me about that is they, I feel like sometimes they don't calculate, according to the old timers, how much moisture you had in the fall before it snowed. Because it was completely dry.
You know, Larry Don, he said that, he said that could also change that, because you're exactly right.
Goes straight around and all around.
Right, there's no submoisture going into the fall and the winter, and so that's gonna soak up a lot of that snow melt, yeah, you're right.
There's a situation too, at the last windy episode that we had, the folks measuring the snowpack, they found a lot of dust on the snow from that dust storm, which makes, which reduces the reflectivity of the snow and makes it easier for the sun to melt that snow.
Sure.
And we're coming up on our traditional warmer, windier springtime. So if, you know, if temperatures remain above normal and the snow starts melting more rapidly with the dust content in the snow, it makes me wonder if that 54% figure might start shrinking really fast.
Yeah, it may make it come off faster too.
March or April.
It may make what's up there come off a lot quicker. It may melt a lot faster.
Yeah, certainly the snowfall's been more generous in the mountains. That's sort of saved our bacon a little bit.
I'll say that, it saved our bacon's that reservoir, they're being 85% full. That's what's saving our bacon, but that didn't save our bacon, that reservoir did.
Yeah. Overall, our situation, we've got the Pacific Northwest storms. They're going too far north. You get too many times, they have a high pressure ridge keeping us warm and dry here. And this past weekend, there's a storm went through New Mexico too far south. The rainfall this weekend only got as far as Farmington. They got .07 inches. And I just, at 1:15 yesterday afternoon, I stuck my hand out and I felt these extremely tiny raindrops on my hand. That was our trace of rain for yesterday. Right around 1:15 in the afternoon, that was it. So, yeah, temperature and dry, temperature and dryness are still working against us right now.
It's gonna be a tough year.
Thank you, James.
Yep, thank you, James.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment, if anybody has a comment. If you'll come up to the podium and state your name and address and what you have to say.
Morning.
Good morning.
Ellen Foster, 25314 County Road T. Dolores. I would just like to alert the commissioners that we, the public, hasn't been able to get a complete online agenda for the county commissioners' meetings or planning and zoning meetings for several weeks now. On January 22nd, there was no listing for the Payne subdivision on T. 0.5, and there was no packet in the PNC website, and actually, there still isn't. And on February 26th, the agenda for the county commissioners' meeting ended at 11:30, and there were two public hearings in the afternoon. And then on March 8th, there was no agenda at all posted for the planning and zoning meeting. So the first time, I kind of let it slide. I figured that was an honest mistake. But the second time, that was a failure to list public hearings. So that was a little more serious. And the third time, with no agenda at all, well, now I feel like I need to say something. So there seems to be a broken link in the system somewhere.
I've worked with Jim on that. And I mean, I post the whole thing on there, and it only copies half of it. So, I mean, I take it two or three times to make sure that it's working. But there's something with the Google that's up. So we're duly noted, and he's trying to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, and LeAnn has said the same thing too, that she's, thinks she's posting it, but it's not, nothing's going up there. Yeah, and so I'd just like to say that this is a good example of why we need to keep publishing notices in the newspaper, because sometimes the internet doesn't work.
And they posted on the window too.
I know, but you have to come all the way to town to see it.
What about, doesn't Mazumah County have a Facebook page?
I don't think the county does. I mean, each, several departments do. The veterans do, the weed does.
Because if it was on the website, you could post it on a Facebook page.
I don't think Facebook...
In this century, you're gonna get, I don't think we have a notice problem, because we do post it.
Right.
Yeah, no, I'm not claiming that, anything like that. I'm just saying that there's a problem out there, we just can't, we can't get it, yeah.
And I have an email right here from Jim McClain. I'm working on the Google Calendar problem, cutting off the information, so...
We're on it.
Thanks.
Got three of our best guys on it right now.
Gail Apoc, 7672 County Road CC, Pleasant View. I've heard an ugly rumor, and the best defense against a rumor is getting the facts. So I'm going to ask you what the facts are. I've heard that our IT manager, Jim McClain, is getting paid $10,000 extra to wire in the IT equipment into the east part of the courthouse. Is that correct?
I know nothing of it.
Not to my knowledge, nobody, we've not authorized that. I don't know who's panting. Who's panting?
I don't know, but this tells me that this is an ugly rumor. And I, and I feel now that I have fact to counter that. So, thank you very much.
Well, can you tell us who gave you the rumor, so we'll know next time?
Yeah, let's, let you know where the rumor originated.
I'd really rather not say. It's not, it's not pertinent. It's a rumor, and to say where it came from just kind of validates a rumor, and I'd really rather not.
Well, we'd like to know the perpetrators of some of this misinformation. You know, we, we give our information out here to the public, and obviously, they're willing to share their information with the public. Maybe, maybe they wouldn't mind you sharing who brought that to you.
I'm willing to share who told me the facts, and that was the Board of County Commissioners, and that's all that matters.
Don't bring your anonymous rumors, don't bring your anonymous rumors to the county commissioners then, please.
Well...
That's like writing a letter to the editor, and you don't get to publish anonymous letters. So if you want to come in here in anonymity, that's, that's not, I don't think that's appropriate, Gail.
Well, okay, if you, if you don't think it's appropriate, I apologize for that. I just...
A rumor is, a rumor is an unfounded, baseless hearsay, and I would like to know who's purporting that.
Well, I, I will tell you...
You believe it enough to bring it to us.
I will tell you that I will repeat the fact. And I have the fact from the horse's mouth, excuse me if you... From the Board of County Commissioners, and in my opinion, that's really what's important. And I'm sorry that it's...
Is there anyone else? Can we close the public comment? Mr. Ingo Hart.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought I was supposed to be later.
I lied. Next week.
Oh, next week.
I think it's next week.
Bad room.
No.
No, I was like, "Oh, I'm not supposed to be there today."
I know. I'll make sure and let you know. I took some of his time next week, so it's gonna be later. He didn't read all the whole email.
That probably, he got half of it, he didn't even...
We got half the agenda.
Thanks, Rob, yeah, thanks for lighting that up a little bit, right?
Well, now that we're on schedule again here with me. Um, the, uh, the schedule for this week, uh, Road thirty-two L and P will complete probably tomorrow morning. So that was another five miles of gravel that we got done that was desperately needed. And then we'll switch them over to, um, the Mankas district, but that crew will go ahead and get started on Road L and getting it prepped for doing overlay. So we wanna do a little bit of shoulder work, we gotta clean out a couple culverts, um, mark out the low spots that we wanna put some blade patch in so we can get semi-level before they come in and do all their final grading. So that'll be the kinda work we do on it. Um, and P's done from one forty-five to four ninety-one, we keep watering it, we just keep putting water trucks on it because we're not getting any rain, so we just keep watering it and watering it, watering it trying to keep it settling down so it'll be ready to go for chip seal, so, and it's holding well, it's doing well, so. That's good news and Cortez then is pretty much up to speed and caught up. Uh, Mankas did some roads last week, uh, did forty, forty-one, they were getting a little potholy and stuff, so they went ahead and took one water truck and a blade over there and fixed those. And then, uh, starting Wednesday, they'll do Road thirty-three point two five and thirty-three point seven five, there's a half a mile on each one of them, those are way overdue, many years overdue for gravel, so they've pulled the edges and pulled the shoulders and got everything shaped up and put some new culverts in and they're ready to go gravel those. And then, uh, get back to blading roads again. Uh, Dolores, um, they're gonna finish putting in some culverts today. Some extensions on Road twenty-five, last week they worked on Road thirty-two and R and T point five and there's still some more to do on that for some brush cutting. But we wanna get those culverts and stuff in too on the extensions on, uh, Road twenty-five and get it ready. And then, uh, they also went and did some work on Road thirty-one this week, which is the Dolores Norwood Road. There was enough snow in the ditches that before we lost it all, we pulled it up on the road and got it into the road because the road is just bone dry, there's just nothing there, so. And we gotta get some moisture in it before we can do any gravel in the spring, so we took the time to take the blades up, pulled the snow out of the ditch, put it on the road, smeared it out and I think that'll help a lot, so we got that done. And then, uh, we also wanna try to about the twenty-first and twenty-second, go pull those roads again, I, I'd like to try to get the gravel started about, uh, March twenty-sixth, it'd be our target date to start graveling Dolores Norwood Road. So if all goes well and we get a little bit of moisture, uh, right now we're waiting for water in Beaver Creek to rise, it's, it is running a little bit, but we need more than what it's got. So we're just kinda waiting, waiting game here to let it warm up a little bit and get some water up there.
So you're just waiting on water?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Is there very much snow out there?
No, none, we can turn trucks around anywhere we want to. Um, like I was telling commissioners when we stepped out, saying, we did get some out of the ditches to pull up on the road and that added some moisture to the road, which is helping to get moisture in it. We feel good that Beaver will run and we'll get water out of it somewhere around the twenty-sixth, depending on temperatures, if not, we'll just bump it a week, we'll slide a week. But we wanna get that done, we wanna get that gravel before, um, we lose that opportunity of water, if we don't, we're in trouble, so. I don't think we can haul it that far fast enough to do what we're gonna do up there, but no, there's nothing up there.
Beaver collects clear up there towards Dora.
Right, right, so, uh, there's not even really any ice at Beaver, there's a little bit, but you can push your hoses through it, so, yeah, it's not good up there, so. Anyway, that's kinda the plan for the Dolores District is we're going to haul some chips in the next week or so, get a few things, some chores done and then we're gonna hit that Dolores Norwood Road and, uh, we went out for quotes for trucking, getting quotes gathered up to add six more trucks to the plan and get it done in about eight or nine days instead of fourteen or twenty days, you know, so that's kinda the plan.
Do it quick and get it done quickly, yeah.
And hopefully get a lot of rain, I, I, I would love, nothing better than to lay that down about seven, eight inches thick and then get phone calls up there in four-wheel drive up there. That would be wonderful news, because once we dry out, we can blade it and it'll be perfect and so, that's good, so, anyway. Uh, Roundup District is, uh, working on Road twenty-one, uh, they're, we're trying to get two miles there, pulled up and shouldered up and ready for gravel. And then, uh, we're gonna do some graveling on their chip seal approaches on their, on their, any chip seal road they got. But right now, we're trying to get twenty-one ready for gravel because it's pretty bad and it needs gravel there too, so. Of course, the trucks, like I said, are hauling over to Mankas and then up on Road P and then we'll haul some chips, uh, we've got a stockpile of chips in Cortez and we got a stockpile of chips out at, uh, Lewis for that Road W project and then Road twenty-five project will supply chips right out of hay camp, that's close enough and just haul straight out of hay camp with that, so. Crushing chips, uh, actually I show that through the end of next week, but chips will probably end, maybe this week, we'll be done with chips completely. And then we'll just be hauling, we'll be crushing three-quarters road base again, so, and then stealing some three-quarter or chips out of that. Coughlin, we've got him scheduled for, uh, April second and I haven't showed him on the schedule yet because I don't show April yet, but our, 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 right now, our plan is to start on Road L, do that short section where we did that culvert work.
Yeah.
We wanna take about five hundred foot of that out, raise that grade so we can do that overlay through there and get that up out of the swamp. So we'll start with them first, so then we can take the trucks and haul that in after while they're doing grinding. Then take them to Road W, then swing around to twenty-five and then we'll end up at forty-two above Mankas, we wanna take about six tenths of that out that we chip sealed, what was it, last year, through that swampy area and the pond and all that where there's water, we've been working on the drainage area, we fixed a lot of the drainage, now we're just gonna grind that out, let it set, break some gravel, let it set one summer and then we'll come back in and put an overlay on it, yep, so. So that's kinda the s- schedule for, well, it's not kinda, that is the schedule for the next ten days, so.
Do you have the grinder scheduled then, or planned for the grinder next year?
Yes, uh, I don't wanna tell you which road yet because we have to discuss a lot of issues there, but some of the target roads would be like Road P, west of four ninety-one, that would be one that we'd take a hard look at, maybe Mary between one forty-five and, or even, even twenty-nine to one forty-five. Those are some of the worst roads we've got for.
They've never traveled road.
Yeah.
Boy, I tell you, from one forty-five to four ninety-one, it's.
Yeah, yeah, and then if you haven't drove P for a while, go drive it from four ninety-one to say Road twenty, you know, that's just, yeah.
Catching all that in the point.
Yeah, and we got some major culvert issues on P to take care of. And so those are just roads we're looking at, you know, and I think that's fair to say, I have dialed within, of course it takes your approval on each one of them, but right now, that would be the ones that would be putting our focus on, yeah. Next year, we're already planning next year's work, but next year I would like to significantly reduce new chip seal, back off how much new chip seal we put down.
And go back and.
And go back and repair old chip seals, it'll be more of a grind and repair.
Yeah.
And for a couple, three or four years, we need to do more of that, less new stuff now for a while, so, but which ones yet, Larry Don, I don't, I don't wanna come up, you know, so.
I just know that you said that the grinder costs, you know, it costs so much for, for transport and so you like to.
Do as much as I can, yeah, I'd like to do as much as we can handle without having to go a year, a year without being able to get caught up again. Some cases I don't mind, some cases we need.
It's okay to grind it and let it settle.
But, but I'd really like to grind about as much as we can handle a year without causing it to go over, you know.
Less phone calls.
If it need, for both of us, so, if it needs to go over a little bit, fine, but if we can get it fixed that year, that's better, you know, so, so. Uh, we're grinding, basically Road L is about five hundred feet, so then, you know, whatever, but W is one point seven miles, twenty-five is two point seven miles, and forty-two is about seven tenths of a mile. So you're looking at one, two, three, four, almost four miles.
Four miles.
Yeah, a little over four miles of grind and repair and that's, that's pretty good chunk, you know, we've done more, but it takes a lot more effort, we got a lot of things to do, so. I need to get you guys, I wanna, I guess it would be James, to sign this, this is a document from the Forest Service, it's our, um, um, cooperative road agreement to do Dolores Norwood Road. So this is for fifty thousand dollars that they're gonna support us with.
Is it the same thing that, is it any different than what we planned it as?
No, it's the same thing except it's just a.
Dollar amount.
Dollar amount with their work plan attached to it.
Dollar amount's considerably more, isn't it?
No, that, no, I would like to have about four hundred thousand, but fifty was, fifty was what they, uh, offered this year and they're gonna try to get us worked in for next year too, to get us more for the chip seal part of it. But, uh, this, this certainly helps with paying for extra trucks or paying royalty on the gravels or however you choose to do it, but this is our donation to that road to, at this point, to help gravel it, so. Well, John's looking at that, I'll move on to, we did the, uh, tour of Road B B last week with the, uh, engineering group. This'll be for our application to go in on April first for DOLA. What we're looking at is from four ninety-one to Road thirteen, which is half of that between ten and four ninety-one. Grind it up, tear it up, rebuild it, yep, uh, add a, add a few culverts, um, probably on, from four ninety-one to fifteen, I'm gonna ask the DOL to actually help us fund paving that mile, because it's where we have all that water issues. Re-grind, fix that, we got a lot of steep hills and I'd like to do just an asphalt minimum three inch overlay or grind and, and replace with asphalt from four ninety-one to fifteen, then pick up from there and go on out, so. They're working up the, uh, the grant application and their work plan for us and the estimate on that to get it turned in by April first, so we're hoping to get that turned in, which will fall into the twenty nineteen work cycle, which helps us a lot, then we can plan for chips and how many chips and this, that and the other and not have to do it all in one summer and get started late. So that was the whole purpose of backing off this little bit to get on this other cycle, so. That meeting went well with our engineering group out of, uh, Russell Engineering and I'm pretty happy with what they're thinking and I think we'll have a pretty good plan put together for that chunk.
How far is that from four ninety-one to fifteen?
It'd be one mile.
One mile?
Yep, one mile, so. And, uh, it's just with the water and the drainage issues there, it's gonna take a lot of work and I just know this much, chip seal is a wonderful thing for a lot of things, a lot of areas, but it doesn't handle water. No, when you got water involved in it, it just doesn't work, so. So that's our plan, now whether we get it or not, I don't know, let's see.
Shoot for it and see what happens.
What happens, yep, so.
So, and, and if the infrastructure plan was to get passed, then we could get, um, twenty percent on some of these projects with federal government.
Even better than, yeah, so we do eighty.
That was a big debate back in DC, the commissioner complained with, the undersecretary gave a speech and they was complaining about, well, the county's gotta pay eighty and we gotta pay twenty. And his response was, has the federal government ever gave you? And not wanna, of course they haven't.
Never have, yeah, yeah, so that may.
Shut them up.
Well, that's good and, and, and what I like about DOLA with what we're doing on this one is we do the work, if we do the work, then we can match our fifty-fifty of work and kind. When we contract it out, then we get a little more cash out, like we have to put more cash into it. But it works successfully last year, I anticipate it working well again this year if we do the work and they help with the funding of the asphalt, the oil, the paving, um, we'll see how it works. But there's a lot of work involved in this, it takes a lot of our man-hours and equipment to do, so.
This is what I'm getting at, so there's, if it passes, there's gonna be fifty billion dollars for rural America. And it's first come, first served, so.
Be ready.
Have your guns loaded, yeah.
And there's no limit as far as how big your project is, if somebody came in there and said, somebody like Will Kane just got.
Twenty million dollar road project that I want, yeah.
And they pay twenty, we pay eighty? Do they do matching kind or is it cash only, or is it too many details to know all answers yet?
I think it's strictly cash, but I don't just hold out the grain of salt, I'm thinking that that was asked, I cannot remember the response, but.
Which is the biggest problem with most counties, they don't have any cash, yeah, that's the cash issue.
And that's what the argument was, it's like, well, this is geared towards, um, counties that, that are, um, better off than.
Certainly a big point, yeah.
However, they deviate from what they felt that it should be set up.
Well, what works best for us, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the counties, but for us is to do working, work in kind, matching in kind, you know, less cash, more work and that's why I like this DOLA. You know, sometimes we pay cash and then sometimes we do the work in kind and it's a working relationship that's really works well with us, you know, with this oil and gas stuff, so. Cause you know, B B, if we do two more years of B B, Pleasant View's gonna be in pretty good shape, yeah, you think about the work we've done over the last couple of years. Then we can start focusing in on Yellow Jacket where we still have the same CO2 issue, the same more outroads.
Same, same more outroads.
Keep working it in this matching way.
Right.
And I think if we keep this relationship with DOLA, we'll do good things in the future.
Larry Don, isn't there a state, isn't there a state, uh, issue or bill stating, trying to realign DOLA and how they put their funds to strictly the counties and the people that are directly affected by, uh, the mineral extraction and not let DOLA be giving out the, all the severance money to, you know, Pitkin County and these counties all over the state that don't have one, don't have anything vested in the, in the severance money, they don't generate any of it, they, they don't have any of the extracting companies or anything in their counties.
It's talked a lot about, actually what is going through right now is, I can't remember how much, I think it was, um, nine million or maybe, I can't remember the number, it was a lot of money. There was four counties that DOLA had, had promised them, um, the, it was some kind of a payback and they didn't do it. So we actually voted in favor to give it to those four counties that, that they didn't get the money and DOLA had to reimburse them. And that was one of the bills that is so far as moving forward. But that's talked about a lot.
I know it is and I, it just seems to me that it's not, especially with the, you know, our severance monies and plus the state, you know, during the Ritter administration, they're two hundred million dollars out of the severance money to balance, balance this budget and it's never been paid back, so, you know, it's kinda like our federal government, the social secur- security fund, they grab money out of it, put an IOU in it and never go back and pay it back, so they really.
That's talked about a lot and, and like everybody's saying, well, they're not gonna give you back that two hundred million, which is sad because that, that should go to the state and the counties.
Can you imagine how much, how much they'd be able to give, give us on projects, they had two hundred million in that deal to, uh, that was, wasn't Ritter a Democrat? That's what I thought, just saying.
What else, um, Road twenty-six, Road L from L to, uh, City Limits. You wanna kick some more money in and do an overlay on that?
No.
Our, it's our part.
It runs right in front of my house and I don't want any part of it.
No, 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 L to the city limits.
Oh, L to the city, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
That's next year on your way out, I'm gonna claim that one, so. I'm gonna stop at your driveway too.
Yeah, yeah, do that, please, yeah. Yeah, I think it'd make sense to do that whole, if we can, if we.
Well, the road is good shape, we gotta do a little, um, repairs, um, just like all of them with an overlay, but it's, uh, if you take the average cost per mile to do overlays with all the bells and whistles, it's gonna be about sixty-seven hundred thousand, sixty-six five, somewhere in that neighborhood.
How much, say that again?
Sixty-six thousand, which we have that in our funds and.
That's sure, it's breaking up bad boy, they're, the shoulders are coming in, that road is really, really getting beat up, especially between L and one forty-five and.
All of it is.
Exactly, but.
So, my opinion is, is we should catch this while we're going by on L. It's, uh, we don't have to pay another mow fee, which is usually pretty expensive, actually a mow fee on most of these jobs is around twenty thousand dollars. So there's a third of the cost right there that could be in a mow fee alone, you know. And the road's in pretty good shape, we need to do a little repair work on it, I'm not saying we don't, get the shoulders ready to do it, but we're gonna catch that from there to City Limits, which is right at the hospital district, the new hospital being built. I'm sure the city will look at their side down the road too, I'm just guessing, but now's the chance, now's our time to do it.
So we would go from L to south.
Yeah, we won't do till Keenan's driveway till twenty nineteen.
How about twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five.
So, anyway, just kidding.
I think, yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea, cause that, I'll tell you, that road gets a lot of traffic.
And, and it's gonna get a lot more.
Well, you got Osprey coming down, you got the hospital coming down it and you've probably got some of the court people coming down, I mean, that thing, there are days I sit in my driveway to wait to get on that road.
Absolutely.
I would agree to it except for one thing, where you stop at the city limits, would there be a sign that says Monzoma County heading back that way?
We can put money in.
Yeah, cause I don't think a lot of, I think a lot of people think that's ci- that's city, I really do, I think a lot of people think that's city, yeah.
No, I see what you're doing, yeah. And then, you know, we were talking a minute ago about which roads to grind and I, you know, all kidding aside, whether Keenan lives there or not, twenty-six north of L needs to be ground up and replaced, I mean, there's, there's nothing there to save anymore.
It's getting be- it's getting beat to death.
And it'll be high on the list, absolutely, so, yeah, so.
There's an awful lot of traffic.
You know, that's the, why, you said that and I know we got P going across with the new chip seal, but I feel like we did a lot out there and not as much up here closer to town. That's why, and to me, especially from four ninety-one to, to, um, one forty-five.
I would like to have done an overlay on that one, but I don't think we can, I think it's too, it's too far gone, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There's got to be, maybe parts of it, we'll look at it harder, maybe we'll pick up a half a mile here or whatever, but it's just gone, it's just tired, it's done. It's gotta be ground up, re-gravelled, rebuilt up and re-chip sealed, so, but them are the ones we'll tackle in the next couple of years, those are the ones we'll go after now. But them are the ones we'll tackle in the next couple of years, those are the ones we'll go after now, so. And you're right, I mean, the the city limits around the city is getting so busy that all these peripheral roads around city limits are just hammered, are getting hammered, so maybe, but, you know, but doing L as an overlay will take some of the pressure off of M.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, M and, it doesn't matter about trucks, they've got to go to the port of entry, the M or L, so, once they get to that point, they've gotta go, so.
Gotta go anyway.
You know, if they wanna go on L, good, that's what it's for, that's what we're doing it for, it's a more industrial type road, so.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So, if I can get a signature there, I can get that turned in, and then we can go to work on the Doloson Over Road.
I've moved that we approved the road project agreement between Monzoma County and the USDA Forest Service, San Juan National Forest for the year of two thousand eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh.
I gotta get it signed, unfortunately.
Approved the road project, road agree- or road project agreement between the Monzoma County and the USDA Forest Service, San Juan National Forest for two thousand eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right there on that, yeah, orange tag there, James, right below there, you should have a place to sign, just one signature there by the commissioner. And today's date, yeah.
Have we got any updates on the water? Take out on the frack of a seed? Uh, I don't know if we really have a lot of updates, we did receive like a third of the last week. I have gone through it all yet, I. Sorry, I just wanna talk to you about it, I'm public, but uh, I don't know about that date. Cause I know that they'll be turning that water on here in probably the next month or so for Utes.
I went to the DWCD meeting, they had that on their agenda last Thursday. And uh, there was a discussion about uh, use, being able to use not only our, our uh, water riser at the fairgrounds, but also the canal all the way down to the, where it goes, goes into the Ute Tribe where you can, and uh, uh, nicely enough, we had some really good support from the, from the DWCD board. They're going to take it to their, I didn't know this, but there is a four-person committee that oversees that canal.
Absolutely.
And there's a tribal member, a DWCD member, uh, MBI and one other, I don't know, Bureau of Rec, probably Bureau of Rec. They will take that proposal to that committee, and if that committee sees their way clear to allowing us to do that, then we'll be able to take M and I water, you'll be able to get M and I water, not only from our place at the county fairgrounds, but all the way down through that canal, so.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Yeah, it was a nice meeting.
Yeah, that was a big improvement from that same meeting last year.
Yeah.
Do you know when they're, they will have that meeting?
I'm not sure, Larry Don, when they meet, but it's su- it's soon, it's within, I think, within the next week or ten days, yeah, yeah, so.
I can, uh, I'll, I'll update you a little bit on our riser, we are one statement away from the private landowners of getting an easement approval to use their Bureau of Acquisition easement, they just need the landowners to say it's okay with them, since they're kind of a sub underneath the landowners there.
Oh.
And the landowners are um, the people that own that subdivision in there, there's uh, like six different business lots in there.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, we're working out some details as access goes there with them, um, I don't see a problem, hopefully today or tomorrow we'll get that, and I'll turn that into Robert Stump at the Bureau, and then they'll send us a letter saying that we have uh, uh, permission to use their easement to back down our trucks, so. We're, we're making progress on that too, so.
Yeah, that, hopefully, hopefully the end-all will be able to be able to use that whole canal all the way down.
That's amazing, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's just like you can on the north side, I mean, you know, DWCD canals, you can pump out those canals anywhere.
We do all the time, yeah. So, I'm hoping. The problem down there last year, I don't know if something's changed, but the MBI manages that canal.
Yeah, see, that's, yeah.
As a manager, they said no, so, that was where we got, ended up last year, so maybe something's getting changed, so.
We're hoping, which positive, DWCD board was quite supportive of that.
That's great.
Yeah. So, we'll see.
So, anyway, busy time of year.
You're pulling on your boots tight every morning, aren't you?
I'm scared we're gonna be out of water, and then we're gonna just have to go cut trees, I guess, but uh, yeah, it's uh, we're so far so good.
It, it's pretty optimistic, uh, DWCD's still very optimistic about what the irrigation season, the irrigation season's gonna look like for the full-service farmers and the MBI, that uh, that's what the snowpack is right now, and if, you know, all things hold true, that there should be a full irrigation season now. Now, after this season, then we, we can real, we can really be in a, a bunch of hurt if we go through another winter like this one, but. But this, this coming year looks, looks relatively okay, I mean, it's it's still not good for dry land farming, there's a whole lot of this country that's still gonna be drying and burning up, especially, I'm afraid, those mountains and that stuff's gonna, gonna, gonna hurt.
Been a time or two when they didn't plant.
I've got a meeting to, to go on the High Line, Toyoak High Line Canal for a walk-through on the twenty-tenth of April.
They're doing a tour on the twenty-first of March, but that's a meeting.
Is the twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth.
Do you want a list of where we like to draw water out of?
Could you do that for me?
Yeah, I gave it to MBI, and I'll send it to you too.
Absolutely, I'll take that with me.
That whole High Line Canal is a big issue for everything South Valley.
Are you going with the board or something?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be tagged along, or do you think that?
I don't think I've heard of it, no, I think it might be a good.
I'd rather it not.
Okay, okay.
He's doing real well without me, so.
If you could get that list to him, then he could possibly even get it as an agenda item, so that they can, the board can have that ahead of time.
And this, this was a list that Brandon and I actually put together, together, we worked on it to um, isolate two particular areas that we could draw without any problems with water share users, citizens, anybody that has a problem with it, we focus in on these particular spots. And that's been on their board for a year now to discuss if we ever get to do it again, draw out these canals.
How do you draw it?
Pump out of them, yeah. So, I will absolutely give you that list, so you have that in your hand, and I'll tell you Road N or Road L or whatever roads we were using to access to get water to take care of this whole South Valley, Toyoak High Line Canal part, absolutely. We measure, we measure by the truck load, we keep the truck load.
Can you dif- as I say, can you differentiate, differentiate the Toyoak High Line versus the MBI?
Yeah, and that would be M and I water, so see, that's where, that's where it would be M and I water, it won't be ag water.
Yeah, we tried that last year, but they wouldn't let us pump out of that canal, cause they manage the canal, so, that was what.
I think there's different attitudes.
Yeah, that's, that's good news, that's good news, so.
Do you see C D on that?
Yes, I will.
Um, there's also a stock run here, later this month, I believe, with the MBI.
Yeah, but we've been told no, so, we can't pump out of the canal. We could use that stock water, if we can figure out how to get it out of the canal.
Do you have any landowners that need to fill the ponds?
We, we've got a few here and there that we'll be able to get something from, that we've been told no, you know, they've stopped, it's cause of dropping the water, but some of them will come back now, yeah, yeah.
Is that pond, is that pond a mine, is that, would that be of any value to you?
If I could get close enough to it without tearing stuff up, you know, right now it's a little too far away to pump out of, I'd have to get on the property and.
Yeah, jump up my driveway and drive right down to it.
It could be, if you.
Cause that, cause that has the spring fed, it has, I have water in that all, all year long, all, all year round.
It'd be a big help.
Wouldn't. We'll come out and we'll take a look at it.
I'd love to, thank you for the offer, cause that's, that's what it takes.
I mean, I didn't know if it was close enough to anything that it'd benefit you or not.
All this area.
Yeah.
You gotta pond them all, ways from the root.
No mines right there, you come right up my driveway and go right.
A lot of times, we could do those things, but we tear stuff up, so we don't wanna tear things up, now, some people don't care, it's often uh, who knows where, we'll pass somewhere, there's a pond, and they don't really care, but you know, when you're coming onto a place that's nice, well, we don't wanna tear up roads or the ground or whatever, you know, so.
Well, we'll, we'll bring a truck out and get them to take a look at it, yeah.
You had a question? Okay. I'll get you that copy of the same listing, so. Perfect, good meeting.
Okay.
We'll give you a score up.
Yeah. Nice to have some things go our way once in a while.
Absolutely, I love this conversation, it's great. Thank you, Rob.
Good, yeah, thanks, Rob.
Mr. Torres.
My own scientific study shows there's a lot of eighteen-wheelers and trucks with gravel and rafter and.
There's a lot of building going on, my wife makes me drive around on the weekend. Then she calls me and says there's like modular homes going up and down the roads, and they're heavy, so.
They're probably tearing up the road.
We'll have to put you on a pothole patrol.
Yeah.
Make notes where the potholes are.
I can do that, I can do that, I'll either have a cell phone and. Oh, oh, oh.
But I think I just.
There's that.
You just.
No, but it's good, cause there's, I see a lot of trusses going by and a lot of building, fill, fill dirt.
Cold in here, huh?
Well, I took my vest off. Show my mug.
I've moved to approve the. Moved to approve the Colorado Department of Military Veteran Affairs Service Officers Monthly Report and Certification to Pay for Monzoma County on the month of February two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Colorado Department of Military and Veteran Affairs County Veteran Service Officer Monthly Report and Certification to Pay for February two thousand eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for doing that, commissioners, and we'll get that up to the state today. Um, just to go over for last month, uh, we had a hundred and eighty-five veterans come through our office. Uh, we had twelve of those were new, it was a decrease of forty-seven visitors when you look and compare it back to twenty, thank you, back to twenty seventeen. Uh, I did write down uh, some reasons why I think we probably had the forty-seven decrease. I did have one employee was out for the full week, um, and actually, that employee ended up uh, going out later in the week, I'm sorry, later this month, and he's gonna be out for like two weeks, had uh, a surgery, but he'll be fine, he'll live. The only thing is, he's a former Navy guy, so it's gonna take him longer to heal. You know, if he'd have been an Army dog or Marine or something, you know, maybe he'd, you know, he'd have healed faster, but I don't know.
But you guys don't heal things.
Oh, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him heck. We're gonna give him heck, and he, he, he dishes it out too, so. But uh, no, he's doing good, but he was out for a week, and he'll be out for another two weeks, actually, he had a procedure done, um, but he'll be fine. So, that'll decrease my numbers, cause what happens is people will come in, I'll have people, or Sarah will have somebody, and then they just turn around and leave if they don't wanna wait, or they see, you know, people out there, but they always come back, they always do, it just spreads out. Um, plus, we had President's Day off, that was a day off, um, and then I was out pretty much most of a day. I took a veteran up to uh, Telluride for a mental health exam for a claim that I did, and I'll give you a little bit of good news on this one. This one here was a claim, um, well, it was multiple conditions, but she went up for me- uh, a mental health exam. This is a veteran that had tried filing these claims in Denver when she was living up there, she did this three times, but she would never go to the exams, would never go, um, you know, in my non-psychological PhD mind, I think she just didn't want to talk about what happened in service, it was very difficult to talk about, it was a topic of military sexual trauma, which happens both to men and to women, uh, but she didn't wanna, I think, deal with these questions because it, you have to relive. Uh, to make a long story short, um, I mean, I, I convinced her, you have to go do this, you have to get this over with and put it to rest. So, in a nutshell, she has won the claim, uh, for multiple conditions, she went from zero percent, so she wasn't getting paid, it was for something minor, now she's up to eighty percent disability, which I think for her is like fifteen hundred dollars a month, and she's um, she's gonna get a check for a little over twelve thousand dollars, I posted it on Facebook, but the names, there's no names, it's just general information. Um, obviously, she called back crying, she's glad she did it, um, I think she's at peace that she was able to talk to a doctor, and that she can move forward and get help from the VA health system, the money doesn't, uh, you know, doesn't cure anything, it doesn't fix anything, it'll maybe lift her up a little bit out of poverty. Uh, but now she can get some help, she put it to rest, so that's our, you know, our feel-good story there. Uh, normally, I don't take veterans on medical appointments because it takes me out of the office, but in this case, and since it was a female, I did take my wife, um, and my doc- my sister-in-law, so, I just never go, you know.
Hey, Rick, just, just as a, a note, can, can Axis, can we not do our, those types of mental health exams here at our Axis, uh?
If they have someone that is a, like, these people are PhDs, like psychiatrists, psychologists, uh, their credential, the answer is yes, but they have to go through the process of applying to go to do these exams, cause the.
Be approved through the VA.
Yes, you have to go, because, yes, the thing is, and we actually have doctors here, like, I'll give you an example, in town, Dr. Lucia Story.
Mm-hmm.
She's a board-certified audiologist, I mean, she's legit, there's Dr. Christina Lawrence, uh, I think Lawrence Speech and Hearing Center out of Mankas, they've gone through the process of actually being certified to do these exams. And the way that helps our veterans is, rather than uh, a guy or gal having to go all the way to Grand Junction or Albuquerque and sit in front of an exam with a VA doctor, they hire, the VA in Denver hires out private doctors once they've gone through that process, so, yeah, I mean, they don't have to go as far, um, you know, and in my opinion, a lot of these non-VA doctors, I mean, I'll say it, I think they're a little more open to the veteran and pro-veteran, not that the VA doctors aren't, but it almost feels like you gotta go through a gauntlet, you know, to win, uh, win out of the VA. So, I'm very happy with the contract examiners, but we do have some that have done it, so, I mean, I can reach out to somebody at.
You know, it might be worth asking Axis if they'd be interested in getting some of their staff there, maybe through that certification program or.
I'll reach out to them, the only thing is, I don't think they have an actual psychologist or psychiatrist, I thought that person is in Durango, but that's fine. They can go to Durango, it's a lot better than going all the way up, correct. She does come, I think it's a, you know, I think she does come out here, so. Yeah, as long as they go through the process, because you have to do it the way the VA does it, because you're dealing about a moni- it's like a claim for Social Security.
Sure.
You're basically doing uh, claims for injuries.
Yeah, disability.
Yeah, you're dealing with money here, so, you know, they have, they have certain regulations and.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, I could, I can easily reach out to those folks, but yeah, we're very happy, that was a really uh, feel-good story there, I mean, I'm, I'm glad she actually, you know, stuck through it this time, you know, fourth time's a charm. Uh, last month, uh, I did six house calls slash nursing home visits, we did three outreach events, we filed thirteen claims, and we won seven in the month of February, obviously, those seven claims are claims that we did, you know, in the preceding months. These seven people won six thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars, all combined, if I multiply their earnings in the next twelve month, during a twelve-month period, it'll be eighty-two thousand, almost eighty-three thousand a month. Uh, let's, no, that's annually, I'm sorry, sixty-eight ninety-nine monthly, if they all don't move, eighty-two thousand uh, dollars will be coming here, um, and maybe that's why they're building houses out there, I don't know. Which hopefully, they're paying taxes, right? Uh, and seventy-five thousand dollars in back pay, we're always excited about our winnings. Uh, and when you look at January and February, these last two months, we're almost thirty thousand dollars in new income a month, three hundred and fifty thousand, um, again, if they don't move, they don't go anywhere, and a hundred and fifty-six thousand in back pay, so. Like I've told the commissioners before, you know, we can't control how much money they win, all we control it, and whether they're gonna spend it here, that's another thing, but we can't control and measure um, you know, the winnings and the earnings that these folks, the veterans, and the survivors are bringing in, so, we're excited about that. Uh, if the commissioners have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Just, the money you bring in, it's like you worked for Goldman Sachs.
His ROI is really good, isn't it, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, and uh, and the thing is, we love doing this, we love doing it, and we're always asking them.
You're benefiting veterans that didn't know they had those things, what I like is that you're, you know, you're providing an opportunity for these people that have served through the military, our country, that they've got these benefits that are due them, that they, they would never find without you helping them find them, and.
We appreciate it, and everyone here, the public included, the newspapers, everybody, the, the veteran organization, they're always sending us people, I was looking at some serving. We appreciate it, and everyone here, the public included, the newspapers, everybody, the veteran organization, they're always sending us people. I was looking at some surveys this morning, there's four of them, I'm gonna send them to the state, I'll email them to the commissioners, and all of them had word of mouth, which I, I use that to gauge. Like, you know, do I need to be doing this type of outreach, that type of outreach, but a lot of it is word of mouth, and every veteran that wins, nine out of ten, I write them a letter, and I, I, I ask them to share what we did with another vet when they come across them or relatives. And it doesn't have to be here, it could be someone out of, yeah, somewhere in Denver, and, you know, it's just everybody helping each other, and, you know, we have a small community that loves veterans, and that's always, that's always a plus. So, no, I thank everyone for their kind words, and we'll go back, crack the whip, and keep at it, and we love, we love doing this.
Hey, it shows.
We love, we love doing it, so, these are, these are the ones where you go home and you're like.
You've made a difference in people's lives.
You make the difference. I came in this morning, I just posted it, this one guy, Walmart employee, was getting a twenty percent disability, it's about two hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month, and this guy was convinced, well, when I did his claim before, he won, I think it was like hearing loss and tinnitus or something. But he was convinced that the third condition that we didn't win for him, by God, I know it happened in service. So I said, okay, so here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna, you know, get all your records, get a private doctor, you know, everybody, all sides being even, we're gonna look at what the VA said. If you can come up with this doctor says that it is connected to the military, we'll reopen it. So the guy just won it this morning, and they paid him all the way back, the increase, the difference they owed him, all the way back to twenty sixteen, because we kept the claim alive. So, you know, yeah, to him, it was important.
So he was right.
He was, by gosh, this is connected to, I know I injured, you know, and, and so, you know, I was happy where he was at, because he won the fir, you know, two out of three claims, but the veteran, and we'll always help them figure out, how do we go after that last one, you know, push him over the line. And now, when they hit thirty percent, you can add the wife, or the husband, if you're a female vet, you can add your spouse, the VA actually pays you extra because you're married, and if you have children, they add the children to your award until they're eighteen. It just opens up all sorts of things. You get reimbursed travel pay if you go to a VA doctor appointment, so there's a lot of other ancillary benefits, so, you can tell we love this stuff.
You've got it figured out, I know that.
Oh, yeah, we, you know, we love it. No, and these guys, like you said, they deserve it, these men and women, they deserve it. They go in four years, two years, and they get chewed up, spit out, so, anyway, I thank everyone for their time this morning, and.
Yes, sir.
I got to listen to a speech by General Stanley McChrystal.
Okay, Army Special Forces, I think he was.
A four-star general, and what an amazing speech.
What'd he talk on?
Well, he was over the, the, the.
CENTCOM or?
No, he was, no, he was over the.
The theater?
No, what he was over was, was all of the missions to kill the militants, and I don't know if it was in Afghanistan and part of Iraq. He was all, over all of them, and when he, when he first started, they were doing ten missions a day, excuse me, a month, and then they were, he had a structure about how you fight in warfare, warfare, and how the, well, the Al Qaeda was completely different. They, you know, he gave this diagram, so they had to relearn. And he showed this picture of this box, he said, only got about three and a half, four hours of sleep, and every, every, he said, I get to sleep, and about an hour later, they'd come, and they would say, we found them here, we need to drop a bomb, or we need to go in. And he said, after two months, and then he finally looked at him, and he said, why do you keep coming, waking me up? Who told you this? And he said, you did. So he said, well, I don't want you to wake me up anymore, he says, if you feel like, because they take too much time, it's very time-sensitive, and they said, well, then we'll get in trouble, and he says, no, you make the decision, I'm the one that, where the rubber hits the road, if you do something wrong, it still goes on to me. And then he talked about networking, and what he did with the same amount of personnel, he went from ten a month to three hundred a month. And that's how they beat him.
Yeah, they have, they have to, I mean, the leadership has to trust its officers to make the call and make the decision, and they're, they're enlisted, and senior enlisted. The difference between our military and a lot of the Soviet Bloc or, you know, eat, those types of militaries is, we're very decentralized and can make decisions at the lowest level typically.
Yes.
I mean, I know in the Marine Corps you could.
That's what he talked about. He gave a, he had a statement, he says, if the order is wrong, execute the order we should have given.
Right, and they can change on, change on the fly, yeah, because, you know, it is, it is a fluid environment, whereas those other countries, a lot of the other ones, if, if something breaks down at the top leadership, everyone waits. But that's lost, yeah, that's lost opportunity, so, yeah, but, and no, no one more than military, the ones on active duty and former despise war. They don't enjoy it, they don't like it, and will actually do everything to avoid it. But when they have to, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what they're there to do, you know, and I'm getting older, thank God, I don't ever do that stuff. But, yeah, that's, he was an impressive general. All those guys, I mean, they study that. It's an art and they study it, so, they could give a doctorate in war, PhD, these generals, you know, and they're the best. I mean, I used to see them, they go to training in college and school, and the training that they do and the exercises, it's incredible. Our officer corps by far is the best in the world. Anyway.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, everyone, all the best for the rest of, oh, and Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Coming up, isn't it?
All right, top of the morning.
Hey, Wesley, I think you're on the, you're the next.
How do you follow that?
Good morning, Alicia.
What was my name today?
Alicia.
Yeah, I do.
Kind of a new day every day here.
Took some of it back today.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, Kinder Morgan contacted me probably a couple of weeks ago with some questions on their tax bills. It's real property accounts, R zero one three five five and R zero one three one five. Their abstract code, so, in our system, we have different abstract codes for commercial residential, whether it's a producing mine and non-producing mine, there's just all different codes, and then when the codes are put in, that's how the system knows what taxing rate to give them, and this code had been put in incorrectly. So, they were being taxed at eighty-seven and a half percent on their real property.
So it was like production code instead of.
Instead of twenty-nine percent, yes. So they just asked that we correct that, give them the twenty-nine percent. We did, on this, on account one three five five, we did actually correct the grade on one of their buildings too, so it decreased their actual value sum. But on account thirteen fifteen, value stayed exactly the same, just their assessment rate was corrected to the twenty-nine percent rather than the eighty-seven and a half.
At four hundred and thirteen, four seven.
So that turns out to be a.
So on the first one, on the one we're looking at, an eleven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollar abatement, and then eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollar abatement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Correct. It, the reason it hadn't gotten caught in the past is, this was the first year tax bills have gone out after the conversion overrides were on, so, not knowing that that was an abstract code that was used in the real property accounts, I didn't know to check it.
So, in this abatement, do they, how does that, have they already paid their taxes?
No, they have not paid because we, so, because the abatement is over ten thousand dollars, we have to be, you know, you guys have to say it's okay, and then it has to go to Joanne Groff also, she has to be the final say on it. So, I just told them to hold off, because I was coming here today, and then I don't think it would be, I mean, it, you know, honest mistake, just needs to be corrected. I don't think she's gonna hold it up either, but.
So that just, will adjust their tax bill?
We won't be giving them any money back, we'll just be correcting the value due.
So can we vote as the board of equalization now?
Yeah, you guys have to vote it okay, and then it goes to the state.
Does that have to be signed?
Yes.
I would move that the.
Kim, can you get it all?
I would move the petition for abatement by Kinder Morgan on parcels of property numbered thirteen, where did I see that?
The numbers?
R O O one three one five and R, R O O one three five five, be corrected as per our assessors' re, re-categorization of these properties.
Second.
See those numbers again.
Yeah, it's R O O one three one five and R O O one three five five.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the abatement to Kinder Morgan on. This is just the assessment number or something.
Parcel number.
That's the, the number you're looking at is their schedule number, but we're giving them a refund on their taxes. The values, one value changed and the other value stayed the same.
On R O, R O O one three one five and R O one three five five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll leave these with Kim. There's some stuff that needs to be filled out and then signed, and then she has to sign it also, so, I'll just get it back from her whenever she.
Thank you for bringing that, Louis.
Yeah. How'd you, how'd you come, how'd you come across it?
He called.
He called.
Because it, you know, the value doesn't. No, Brandon Greer, the one who took over his position, so it doesn't look any different on the notices of value, because it's just the value, not the tax rate on those notices, so when he got the tax bills the first time he saw it.
Yeah, he said, wait a minute.
Eighty-seven, yeah, this is.
Eighty-seven to twenty-nine, that's a huge step.
Told him to quit crying, but he wouldn't listen to me.
Is Travis over there today?
Yes, Travis is over there.
Ask him if you saw him.
Okay. I will. Did he get his bike? Did he get his bike, is that, okay. Yeah, he was going over Friday to look at it, so.
Oh, well, I don't know if he got a bike, but I know he did.
You're ruining this whole country soon. I wanted to see your face after you hit the bush, I never got to see a picture of you after. You look pretty good today. You healed up pretty good.
I got lots of signatures that I haven't signed. Just the chair, just the chair, this just has to be filled out, and then Kim has to fill it out and do her stuff, too.
Lucky you didn't get it in your eyes, but.
Then I'll decide to.
And tell one of your assistants over there that he might wanna keep a lot of separation between he and the commissioner. It's a dangerous, it's a dangerous, yeah, dangerous undertaking he's getting involved with here, so.
Okay, I'll go straight over and tell him.
Thank you, Wesley.
Thanks, Leslie.
The sheriff, uh, next. Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good, you?
Morning.
Good morning, Sheriff. Is that Dr. Morgan, not ready for reelection?
Uh-uh, he's, they got three of them out there, don't they, three candidates?
Oh, shoot, they're probably sick by now, I have no idea.
Yeah, it's on the Democrat press, there's three of them. He's been a good sheriff for a long, long time. He's been there, what, twenty, twenty-some years, huh? Twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven years? Long time, yeah. I'm missing, he's ready, he says. Yeah. Go, go through real quick. When did you send us his report, Melissa? I know I've got it, and I'm trying to find it.
He, um, last week, I think.
Yeah?
He has most of it on there.
Hmm, okay.
Know some highlights, anyway. Stuff you're probably interested in.
I'm trying to print this stuff, so, I'll be there in just a second.
Oh, yeah. Part of the privacy part of it, wasn't it?
For February, the detention totals would be, this is what's on this page here, you can see that there were a hundred and twenty-nine state charged arrests that were inmates brought into, to the detention facility. We're running somewhere between the, around seventy-eight to, up to about eighty-nine. One day, we had ninety-one for a short period, but it has increased just a little bit from last month in January. We did, we had twenty-four municipal arrests, and so that's a hundred and sixty-nine total for the month. The second page would be, there's your total for the year, number of days, for inmate days. So, we're right at two thousand four hundred and sixty-three total prisoners that, that came in and out of the facility. Next page is your, uh.
It is. Busy place.
Going up there, I tell you. Breakdown for the month of, it's not June, it's February, so. For the state charges, there was, like I said, a hundred and twenty-nine total state criminal charges that were brought in. Municipal charges, twenty-four, it's just a concern breakdown, but at the bottom of the page, it shows you what the reimbursements amount were. For the city of Cortez, which is the municipal prisoners, seven thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents were reimbursed for the month. So that's a hundred and forty days at fifty-four thirty-nine per day, twenty-seven inmates held. The, the other state and county charges is a hundred and nineteen.
That is, you have in there non-reimbursed?
Right, they're non-reimbursed.
So that's how, that hundred and nineteen you're not getting paid for?
No.
Those are ones that are on us, they're on us.
Yeah.
Always the lion's share, huh?
Yeah, it, it always is, it always has been. So, the Department of Correction prisoners, we've only had six inmates held there for a total of forty-five days, which is, there's their reimbursement amount, two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars.
And it's actually, that's what the number is, at fifty-four dollars?
Fifty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, that's what we did for everybody across the board.
Yeah, you know, Steve, I was reading that, and there was one place where you had Dolores still at fifty dollars.
Oh, that was a typo.
A typo, that's what I figured, but on down where.
James called me on that, I was like, yeah, I know.
Okay, because I saw the same thing.
Good looking at that fine brand, okay, there wasn't anybody there anyway. But, yeah, that's been correct.
So there's a law, well, there's a proposed bill going through, and is it ninety-nine dollars?
Hundred and nine, no, hundred and nine today, if they.
Hundred and nine or hundred and eight?
I thought it was a hundred and nine, but anyway.
One time there was a hundred and eighty was a while back.
Is it still alive? Appropriations or somebody hadn't killed it yet, yeah?
No, I mean, you know, when it comes in and out of committees, I'm sure there'll be some changes and modifications and amendments to it, but I, I mean, there's, there's enough interest there to try and, and make it reasonable, that I'm hopeful that it'll, it'll increase, I hope, so.
It needs to.
Yeah, it does, it does. Parole holds, we had eighty inmates, that was the state reimbursees, one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents for that.
You know, it would be interesting if we knew that the number, the additional revenue that you would get if that was to pass.
Yeah, I'd hate to get your hopes up.
The other reason is, if we knew that figure, we might have video conferencing where we could actually testify in front of the Senate from here.
It'd be double what that is. Oh, it would be, yeah, it'd be doubled than what the.
Double than what the city pays us.
About fifty-four dollars.
For what the state pays everywhere.
Yeah, that's.
That's something we're never gonna be able to correct.
But if we took these numbers right here, like these two right here, and, oops.
Right, that seven thousand would be fourteen thousand, and five thousand, and substantial.
So that you would be getting, you'd actually be getting more than what our, our daily costs are.
Yeah.
Per inmate, yeah.
Yeah, because you, you ran, when you ran the figure, Steve, on your actual cost of operations was, what, sixty-some bucks?
Seventy-one to seventy-nine.
Seventy-one to seventy-nine dollars, so, yeah, you know. That would certainly go to help pay for all the prisoners we have to house on our.
And, and you know, and that was a year and a half ago, so, you know, for twenty-seventeen, looking at what those costs would be, you know, you can increase that by probably two percent.
Two or three percent, yeah.
Well, the other thing that we have to realize too, I mean, whatever they're dealing with, and if they have to go to court and things like that, I mean, we don't even have a calculation for a percentage of the court.
I mean, we don't even have a calculation for a percentage of the courthouse costs.
Right, right.
In that number that he's dealing with, you know, but.
Well, like I said, the, the arrangements are done by video, um, now, so that really reduces the.
That's cut down a bunch on your.
It does, on, on, on time spent and, and transport. I mean, we're still having, you know, um, the detention staff dealing with them in that room at the time and back and forth and stuff, but it's so much easier and safer, it really is, than, than having to drive them across the street and deal with them.
Does courts need to do their own transport services?
They do. Well, to me, as a court, yeah, we don't do that. Yeah, we don't do that. Any questions about that? It's pretty much what it is, so. I sent, I sent, uh, all of you and, and John, uh, the catastrophic inmate medical packet.
Now, there was an increase, correct?
Yeah, boy, I'll tell you, it's not on there.
I know.
Okay. I just wanted to get your, your feelings about that. Pre-booking is, is really something that anytime they come into the facility, we should be covered. And so that pre-booking amount, um, is, it's affordable, but it's, it's gone up. Uh, it's twenty thousand, uh, eighty-three dollars and twenty cents for the annual premium.
Have you shopped it ago?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. The others are a lot more, yeah. This is the lowest, the lowest and the most dependable amount. But that's what I wanted to, I wanted to get, um, the county attorney's input on, uh, on what he thought about, so.
Well, we need it, right?
Oh, we need it, yeah. And it would go into effect April the first. Uh, that will come out of, uh, the professional services line item in my detention budget, but I just wanted to.
Did you get, did Mike look at it all initially to, I don't know.
I haven't sent it to him, but, I mean, it, it, uh, it's really, I, I wanted to come to you first so that I, I get what you want, what you think. I mean, it can go all the way up to twenty-four thousand dollars annually. But that's, you know, with the five thousand dollar less deductible, fifteen thousand dollar deductible, so. Between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand, I mean, yeah, um, there's still gonna be some cost to that. You know, we've, we've been very fortunate that we haven't had to, to use that, but times change, that's all. We wanna be ready.
It's a necessary thing anymore.
It is anymore, yeah, it is.
Is that with the five thousand dollar deductible then?
Yeah, it's actually a twenty thousand dollar deductible per inmate. The other one is fifteen thousand dollar deductible with an annual cost of, of, uh, twenty-four thousand, so it's about four thousand dollars annually. I mean, we could go with the, with the top one if you want, but that's up to you. I mean, I, it, it would, uh, because we, you know, I, I cut so much in that budget, I wanna make sure that I've got enough of that, uh, professional services that's coming up to pay for, for the year. So, I mean, this would, this is affordable and, and I could do something if we wanna go to the twenty-four thousand annual cost, so.
How many times you claimed on this type of coverage?
Once in, what, three years ago, something like that? Yeah.
So what are your recommendations, Sheriff?
I, I would, I think if you're comfortable with it, I think the twenty thousand dollar deductible would be fine. Uh, thank you. But, uh, I just wanna make sure because, um, we've got, we've got other, uh, annual costs that come out of that line item every year. And, uh, I just don't wanna get caught short, is all. I mean, insurance is insurance, but.
It's understandable. It's just a new way of gambling, that's what.
It is, I mean, it is. It's, you know, you never know. Um, it's better to have something than nothing.
Right.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah. But, uh, so far it's going, it's going well, and that's with our, you know, that's with an average, uh, inmate population of, of eighty a day. So that's not bad, that's right in there.
Why move the, the recommendation of the sheriff of the twenty thousand deductible?
Okay.
And if we get in trouble with the services later this year, we'll have to deal with it again.
Oh, yeah.
That's the pre-booking or that's the pre?
That's pre-booking, that's with pre-booking. Yeah.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, an insurance policy that's got a twenty thousand dollar deductible.
Thanks, we'll send that to them then and get that paid for. The next is gonna be the, the kitchen, um, oven in, uh, the detention center. This puppy's seventeen, going on eighteen years old now, and it's, uh, on its last leg. If it goes out without being replaced, well, uh, it'll be, it'll be interesting, okay, to say the least, so. This is the same type of oven that this is, and it's the same company. You can see the big difference if it had wheels or not. The one that's in there, um, when they bought that seventeen, eighteen years ago, it, it had the, the caster wheels on it, it's, and they took them off. It doesn't need to be moved, uh, and it's natural gas. So this is roughly the same oven and, um, Melissa and I went through several of those, looking at it ranges anywhere from this all the way up to twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, you know.
You can have one that won't turn on by itself for you, I guess. I don't know exactly what the differences were to get.
But this would be the replacement cost for this and, um, for seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for that. So I'm, I'm asking for you to consider taking that, uh, out of capital or something to take to that. It should last the same amount, but, uh, I don't know. I wanna replace it before it really goes out. Then we're gonna be, um, struggling trying to.
What will you do if you'll?
I'll give it to you if you want, you can do whatever you want to do.
eBay, eBay.
I wouldn't wanna put it in my house. Put it on Letgo.
Let it go?
Yeah.
I know, I, I think there could even be a liability if we sold it to somebody, so, you know, I think it probably oughta.
Cortez yard sale, that's it.
An appliance repair place that wants to take it. Maybe they'll give us a hundred dollars, but I don't know, but, you know, I just assume. It, the parts and stuff are, are not gonna be able to be found, so, why?
It's gotten too old to even get replacement parts and so forth.
And I went through our capital, actually, get a chance to, to look at that, and now that, now that we've got our major being taken care of over there, I think there's plenty of money in the capital. I mean, when we look at it, we've probably got, um, we, I don't, I haven't put that pickup in here yet that we purchased, but, um, we've probably got half a million to a million dollars of flexible money.
Discretionary funds?
Yes.
I would then move that we allow the Monzauma County Sheriff's Department and their kitchen operation to purchase a Vulcan new kitchen range or stove or whatever they call it. Oven for the purchase price of seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Through cap.
Through cap, through our capital account.
So when that invoice comes in, give it to me and we'll get it.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the sheriff's office purchasing a new Vulcan oven for seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and the funds to come out with capital. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now is the, uh, the next item is the Forest Service co-op, law enforcement co-op agreement. Uh, I did speak with them again because all this is, it's just a repeat of what it's been for the last two years.
Have we been billing, did you bill by round a year or would we?
I bill then for, um, there's reimbursement costs, and so, yeah, they get billed.
So if we were allowed to bill up to five?
Up to five thousand, they'll reimburse, yes.
I was just curious what the usual, you know, what we, what we billed them last year?
Uh, it was just, just shy of that, like two hundred dollars, I think.
So, and I think you have to, you have to prove that they did a.
Yeah.
A patrol or, or something like that on the.
We send reports in the payroll part of that that we pay, um, the deputies. This is an off-time or an off-duty type of, uh, it's just a contract is what it is. The thing is, though, is that I talked to them last year and this was supposed to, to be increased at ten thousand. And so, uh, when I got this, I did reach out, uh, to the Forest Service and so there could be an amendment coming in to increase that. We'll see. It's gotta go through its complete cycle, so.
So this is patrols that they do on the forest or, I mean, like.
Did you say it's an off, did you, did I, did I understand? You said it was an off-duty times?
Yeah.
So you have sheriff's department people that do work on the forest service who win in their off-duty hours or?
Yes, that's what pays the, that's what pays their overtime for that. The five thousand dollars is to pay for the vehicle expense and the overtime hours.
So they have their regular route that they do.
Right.
Normal, and then if they have, you know, a weekend, Fourth of July or whatever, and they wanna, they can sign up for an extra shift and get paid overtime for that, and that overtime is sent in separately against this five thousand dollars. So what they're norm, if they had a call, I don't know if I got this right, they had a call, 'cause there was a wreck up there. That was on the regular time. These are, these are extra overtime.
Does this include the Mcfee reservoir patrolling and stuff like that, Steve? Does that?
It's supposed to. Um, first, we gotta have an operable boat. It's the motor that we're trying, trying to get.
They haven't got you an operable boat yet?
I have a boat from Parks and Wildlife that had the motor on it, but the motor, uh, needs to be replaced. And, um, I, I'm not gonna put any more money into that boat until I get a new motor from Parks and Wildlife. So they do have a boat that, um, that we can use if we need to, uh, but we also have search and rescue as well, that, uh, for searches that are, that were called out to the lake and stuff. The page two on the agreement are the, the roads that, uh, they've asked and the areas that, uh,
Where is it?
That are part of the patrolling.
Am I in the right place?
Go down, go down.
Yeah, page two.
There you go, but keep going, 'cause that covers it, and then if you keep going a little bit more, it starts on page three as well.
The boat one is on page three, yeah.
So it does cover Mcfee, even when the deputies respond?
It can, yeah. Yeah, just depends. Five thousand goes by pretty fast.
Not very far, does it?
Doesn't go very far.
No.
And that's why, you know, in, uh, in the nineties, it was, it was close to twenty thousand or more. Oh, yeah, I was able to get that. The thing is, they've been cutting back, uh, so much that, um, I've been trying to, to get this to increase, and so, uh, you know, it'll happen, um, I'm hoping, we'll see. I mean, they just gave you, what, fifty thousand dollars for road maintenance, so.
Yeah, that's for one, one, yeah, it's for Nor, the Norwood Road or the.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, uh, it's one of these things that we, you try to increase because of our calls to, of our service in, in some of these areas, but the big thing is just being out there and, um, and being able to, uh, to meet so many people that are out there too, and they see us, and that's, that's the thing. 'Cause they, they only have one, they have one law enforcement officer that covers the western half of, of San Juan National Forest.
They have one?
Yeah, so.
I, I mean, we approved the, uh, U S D, U S Forest Service contract for two thousand eighteen for law enforcement on the St. Louis.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Forest Service contract for two thousand eighteen on the Schedule A roads. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Let us know if we can put a word, where we should put a word in for you to get that increased, Steve.
Just keep talking to them about it.
Yeah.
Please, when you do meet with them and stuff, talk to them about it.
There's a signature.
Where is the western, the San Juan National Forest?
Continental Divide, top of Wolf Creek.
Yeah. That's a lot of country, man.
It is, it is, it is. And they go through personnel, um, when we've had, you know, anytime that we have, uh, um, crimes that we're investigating or anything like that, I reach out to, uh, the, uh, their E L O, and I, you know, just out of, out of courtesy and whatnot. But it, it pretty much, you know, it's us, but they get, they get a report of what's been, been going on and what we did out there so that, uh, everybody is aware of, of, uh, our activity as far as what's been going on on, on their public lands, too, so. It helps.
Well, they also have in the Parks and Wildlife, the game, game wardens also patrol, did part of that, not too wealthy.
Yeah, and like I said, we don't, we don't have the authority to enforce any, any federal laws, and that's not what we're there for. We're there for to keep the peace and, and to take care of our statutory duties.
Yeah. Traffic violations and.
Yeah.
I believe that there is momentum for that, uh, permanent funding for, uh, fire, because that's why they say they don't have any money there.
Mm-hmm.
Spending it all fighting fires and there's, I believe those, there's momentum for permanent funding for, for that, if that's the case, there should.
Well, speaking, yeah, you know, um, it's important because, uh, the, the person activities are increasing constantly out there. And so, uh, we don't have any reimbursements or anything on B L M, but we don't do, um, much patrolling on, on B L M at all other than we're warned or called out there for, for a different call for service or something, a crime has occurred. So, you know, I, I don't know if it comes out of the same pot or not, it's all, uh, it's all one. It's either the Department of Agriculture or Department of Interior. So, you know, that's where the next assistance could be happening, you know, there's, there's been some talk about that, so that might help. Who knows? Uh, I, I do know that with, um, talking about wildfires and stuff, we are increasing our, um, uh, public communications about, uh, for everyone, uh, to be ready for any types of evacuations that maybe may occur, uh, this year. To get people to think about putting, putting things together, a, a go-bag or whatever with your important documents and things like that, being prepared for people who are, you may be taken care of in the home such as at risas, or juvenile. So it, uh, just getting people to think about when that, if that time comes, being able to be ready for it so that you can go. But, uh, you know, there's, so there's gonna be a lot of, of public information put out between now and, and, and May to get people to at least think about those things and be ready, uh, for that, for that. We, uh, you know, we've got plans, we're doing a lot of, of, uh, pre-planning and exercises when it comes to, um, evacuation processes and where we're going, how it will be handled and so on and so forth. So everybody is coming on board with that, and that's, that's really what we need to do, is just be ready, just in case.
Steve, uh, we had a, the principal, or one of the school board members and a principal, uh, Danny Porter and, uh, Sherri Wright were at our meeting last week, and they were asking if there was some way that we could help through your office, uh, provide some security officers in the, in some of the District RE One schools. And, um, it was brought up, and I guess I was not fully aware of this, but the resource officers in the Dolores schools, you have a, you have a one sheriff and that, and that's done by you, that's not funded by the school district or anything, so. It's probably gonna get a little bit dicey, uh, where these other schools and the other school systems are looking for some type of safety and security in their schools to, to give them an argument as to why, why we can have it in one school in Dolores and not in any of the schools over here in Cortez, so.
Yeah.
So have you given any thought to this or have any?
A lot, you bet.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know, it, um, I'm held to a certain number of, of full-time employees.
Yeah.
So because of what is happening in our country and what's happening here, the anxieties and, um, and the fears and whatnot, there, I've been working with the schools for, since I took office, and we've really stepped up a lot of the safety and security in all of the schools, but, uh, the outlying schools in RE One would be Pleasant View and Luis Ariola, the charter school at Battle Rock. Battle Rock is so far away. I have, they already have a lot of, uh, of safety things that I've given them through our office. But I'm going to have to pull someone out of our patrol division, uh, and assign, uh, and train them to be an S R O to cover. Uh, and assign, uh, and train them to be an SRO to cover those outlying areas. And it, uh, I, I've waited until I get the, uh, the last two that are in training now. That are starting to come out of training at the end of this month, in order to, to, uh, to make that selection of who. Who would want to do that and get them, uh, to the school resource officer training, as well as the critical incident training. Uh, and the increased, um, ability to, uh, to deal with, uh, emergency situations. Where we have, uh, an active shooter in, in the schools. So, that's coming. It, it is going to, uh, again, affect and reduce our, our, uh, our ability to. To cover a lot of the unincorporated area, cause you're taking one out and, and they're, they're there.
I maybe we need to back up just a minute. How did, how did we determine that the Dolores school needed one of our officers in that school? When none of the other schools in Monzuma County have a, a, a county paid sheriff's officer in their schools?
Sure, I did that because of the number of students and staff that's in that school. And a lot of them, like I told you last month, they, uh, you know, these are people from the county.
The number, no, no, explain that, I'm not.
The number of students that attend the school. Is greater than what the number of students that attend Pleasant View or Eric Louis Ariola. We do do stop bys there, and we also have those Louis Ariola and Pleasant View. Because of RE One, Cortez Police Department has two SROs. One does spend some time, it's limited, so we share that, that, that responsibility there. They're not there like they are with the other schools here, especially at the high school and the middle school. It's, it's those schools that, I mean, they have more schools in town, and they have two SROs. I've got, um, you know, Dolores, Louis Ariola, Pleasant View, and the far outlying Battle Rock. Uh, and I just don't have the people to be able to do that. But I can assign one to handle those three schools and, and make those appearances on a daily, on a daily rotation with that.
What about Mankas, do they have?
Mankas is in Mankas, that's the town of Mankas.
They're, they're sheriff, they're, uh.
That's their town marshal, and then, yeah, I've spoke with them.
First of all, so that's emergency management, correct? Like, are we keeping our kids safe?
Uh, you mean like Paul, you mean in Paul, Paul Hallers Baileywick, I'm not, I don't know.
He's involved with, with, with helping set up some of, of the training and stuff, yeah. And we've been doing that for the last three years, and, and we've got several others coming up.
And the second thing is, and I wasn't here last week, but I, I read the, the newspaper, Jim, and, um. It said that they had said that it was ten thousand dollars to train a teacher, did I read that correctly?
That's what they, they told us.
My question is, is could the sheriff's office teach the, the training for a teacher?
That's always been on the table for them, that's up to those individual school boards. I've always offered that, if that's what they decide to do, uh, and there wouldn't be.
Well, apparently at the caucus me, I think, wasn't it at the caucuses, that, that I had read that the. That it was brought up by some people in the caucuses about arming, having school personnel, teachers, staff at the schools. Be armed and trained with, with armaments, and, and that was a almost unanimous, almost, uh. Virtually unanimous, it's gonna be brought to the assembly, isn't it, James? So, so that would be something that the sheriff's department would be. And willing to be involved in and, and do the training and some of that if it.
If that's what, if that's what I'm asked to do, you know I would. And they know it. See, that's, that's, you, you're dealing about something that is still so controversial in, in these school districts right now. And that's what they're trying to tackle and figure out which way to go and what they wanna do.
But I guess what I'm saying is, is their ten thousand dollar statement.
They didn't, they didn't specify, I, I started to ask them, and then I didn't do it. But they didn't specify where that training had to take place or what, but they just said it cost ten thousand.
If somebody that teaches gun safety can't do as good a job.
They're in a state law that says that they can't, uh, can't arm teachers.
That's up to the school board, and that would be, that would be exempt to the firearms that are prohibited, uh, on, on school grants.
I feel like the ten thousand dollars was an excuse. That it hasn't been thoroughly.
The, uh, and it hasn't, I mean, there's still a lot to work through, I know. Um, the argument can go both ways. The biggest thing that, um, for it would be good because of the amount of time, uh, that it takes. Um, to reduce and prevent, uh, further casualties, that's, that's what it's about. You're, you're racing against time. That's why, that's why having an SRO at the school is so important. And, um, but the thing is, the other side of the coin is that, you know, teachers should be teachers. Um, I'm concerned about the security of the weapon itself, the retention of it, um, while it's in the school. And I know that Dolores County has, has, has used this program, um, for the past several years. And, uh, they have, um, they've had some good outcome, but it's, it's a school with. A sma, it's a smaller student, teacher, uh, school, and, and so it's different. Um, but it could, it doesn't mean that it couldn't happen here for that, so, you know, it, I'm waiting to see what will happen. I know that there's some, some talk about, um, additional funding when it comes to school security through the state. So I think you're probably gonna see something come about this year, um, because it's really being pushed for. Uh, and it's about time, it really is. So there's gonna be some help to, to fund that as well. And that's why, uh, PCC wants me to, uh, uh, enter into a contract to have an SRO out at the college. Because of the issues that have been raised out there, and, uh, so we're working on that contract. To see what that will be, and we'll go from there.
And I know this, oh, that article about what happened over in Dolores and the, um, discipline. So that's all over the, uh.
I'll bet it is.
Social media. What I wanted to add, the same thing's going on in Cortez. This is what I found ironic, I go to Washington DC last week, and you have a cellphone, and when you go into a senator's, uh, officer, a meeting. You take the cellphone out, you leave it in the hallway in, in these, these bags, some kind of invention where the cellphone doesn't work. So at the highest level of government to the United States, you can't have a cellphone, but in Cortez Middle School, you can. There's something wrong there, in, in my opinion. And they use the social media for bullying. What do you think's gonna happen over there in Dolores, because I really feel like it should be a conversation that's, that's taken over here into Cortez. I just got through with my, uh, parent teachers conference, and it, it's all about discipline. It, there is no. Taken those teachers' hands, and we have handcuffed them, and they, there's gotta be a change in our schools. Cause we have, you have these few rowdy kids, yes, they have, they might have a reason, a broken home. But they are trashing it for the rest of the kids. And it's destroying our, our schools, we have got to come up with an answer to this.
Well, and you probably know, I've been pushing for this for over three years, with these, with the schools. Um, it's almost like pointy teeth when it comes to the bullying and the discipline, the cell phones, removing them out of the school. Uh, because that's where a lot of it is at, but I'm glad and I'm happy that there's finally. Um, people are starting to take notice about it, and, and wanting to speak out. And actually be involved with the schools, not just the teachers, but the parents as well, and the students want it too. They do too. Um, and so I'm hoping that, uh, out of, out of this, that change will happen for the better. It, it needs to be, and I have, I have already put, um, I've already told them that violence is gonna stop. Uh, we will charge every, every child that's involved in a pre-medicated assault. Like what had happened a few weeks ago in Dolores, and that's why we're there. I'm gonna enforce that law, and that's the way that it is, they can go see the district judge. Uh, and any complicitures that are involved will be charged as well, uh, it, it has got to stop. But having that open communications between the school and us is so very important, and, and that's what has to happen. So that we can try and, and head off things before it happens, they need to make it more strict when it comes to that, to those.
Disrupting behavior, snowballs, you get, one guy gets away with it, and then all of a sudden you got two, then you got four, then you got ten, then you got twenty. It, it has to do with admin, it, I, the teachers can only do what they can do. When I went to school, they had a paddle hanging up. So they could swing it faster.
So you could hear it coming. Enlighten me, what happened in Dolores, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm not on social media, so I don't know what happened in Dolores. I don't do Facebook, I don't do that stuff.
I'm terrible at it too, so.
Yeah, it was almost a meeting completely out of control.
Like a school board meeting or something, or a?
It, it wasn't out of control, there were a lot of, of, uh, there was a lot of anger because things had not happened or changed. And, you know, they spoke with their heart and their minds, and what was on their minds, and that's what you're supposed to be able to do. And, um, I know that there are probably a, a few people that were, uh, were frightened because of, you know, the anger that, that some had displayed. But they have a right to be angry because of what happened. Um, and, uh, you know, to, uh, to set a child up, uh, that. I mean, everything was being filmed before the assault took place, so you knew that they knew it was coming, and it happened. Just out of the blue, and started physically assaulting this person. And, um, that's the kind of violence that should never be on that campus at all, period. That should be the safest place for anybody to go to, especially those kids and those teachers, and that's why I'm there. And I won't leave there, and I wanna be at the other schools as well. The thing is, is that that's what we have to do to protect, uh, our citizens, and, and if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. And I will do whatever I can to make that happen, uh, but it does have to have change, and I think that change will happen. Uh, and I'm glad that it's being talked about finally. Um, I just don't want to have what happened in other parts of the country, even in Aztec and Mexico. Which is pretty close, ever to happen here, because I'll tell you what, it will change. This county and our communities forever, it will, it is something you'll never get over, and so I don't want that to happen. And if I can prevent it, I will, so.
Get, take the cell phones away from the line.
It's so simple to do that. Yeah, you know, I, I just think that, um, having these discussions are good, even in the army.
Do we need to try to set up something between the school boards and commissioners, or, I mean?
I think it's being handled by, I mean, they, they're, they're elected officials, their, their, uh. Uh, their constituents from that school district are there at each one of these school districts, so they're, they're doing what they, what they're supposed to do.
It's televised, they, they said they needed help from the county.
That would be a good thing.
Or, or, there, there's an officer.
There you go. One final thing, we got full funding from the state for the two courtroom security deputies. They funded the, the additional twenty thousand dollars.
For the next year, or would they go back?
For this year.
For eighteen, so.
You didn't think it would happen.
I didn't. We have asked him, I'm gonna tell you what, partner. We've been after them to fund a lot of things, and, and I hope, I hope that's just the beginning of the state team's responsibility for their, for their stuff, so. Congratulations, I'm glad you got that.
Well, it was all of us.
It's gotta help you, gotta help you and your department a bunch.
Well, it helps us tough there, so.
All right, Steve, thanks.
You had something on your mind, James.
It's hard to pry off, so. Thank you. Get outdoors. That's it. Morning, Tom.
Good to meet you. Right there.
Nice to see you again.
Commissioners, you may recall, uh, Get Outdoors Day, that was originally proposed by, by. We Department, and, um, it's been more or less going ahead. If we, uh, I forwarded organizations that possibly might be involved, sponsors that have, that may be involved. The, um, the Monzuma Inspire Coalition has stepped up and would like to be a major partner in this, uh, in this event. Uh, so, uh, Jay and Amy are here to talk about the Monzuma Inspire Coalition, answer any questions you might have. And, um, we can go on for a bit.
So the Monzuma Inspire Coalition started actually in twenty fifteen, and it involved eight organizations. Um, they received a planning grant in, uh, twenty sixteen, and then now we're in the implementation phase. So we were awarded one point eight million dollars for a three-year cycle. Twenty-plus organizations coming together with the common goal of getting kids outdoors. Um, not just outdoors, but creating places for them. Um, outdoor learning labs, school gardens, then, um, programs and pathways. When we talk about pathways, we're talking about jobs for youth in the outdoors. Which would be amazing for our county, so, um, I provided this, uh, short presentation. And, um, I'll just go.
I'll let you. Now, it's really hard to see, you have to kinda, you have to watch that, but use the, um, use this right here.
Okay, we got this, okay. No, it's like, okay, so, again, local organizations, um, all the organizations that we're working with are local. We're expanding into our county with local programming. Um, our, um, our challenge is to decrease barriers. Um, that keep youth and their families from experiencing the outdoors. Some of that is as simple as transportation, some of it is more complicated as far as the expense of gear. Or knowledge of the outdoors, um, and then, um, and part of our task is to create. Uh, a lending library for equipment, um, through the Pinion Project, we're going to build a really, um, healthy. Actual gear lending library, so that if families, um, wanted to go camping, they would have everything that they needed to do that. And they can just check it out, like a library item, um, which would be amazing.
Kayaks and float tubes and stuff like that.
I think paddleboards were in the first, um, but kayaking goes a little farther. We're gonna work through the Pinion Project, and part of our training in this grant process is how to house gear. And it's as simple as maybe a container that's really, um, organized and things like that for space constraints. Um, oddly enough, Fort Lewis College cycling team has worked out of a container for twenty years. Right, so we have some great local examples, and then we have some statewide examples, and people from, um, outside of the state. Who are coming in to train us through GOCO to, um, how to, how to go about that. Um, so when we talk about places, we're talking not just the school gardens, but we're, we're talking about expanding. And enhancing those locations. We're, we work with all three school districts and, um, Jay, who represents Fozzie's Farm, which is a farm that's owned by the Monazuma Land Conservancy, and building classroom spaces. So that kids can engage in agriculture in a myriad of ways and experience what that lifestyle or what that career opportunity could be for them. Um, agriculture employs eight percent of our county and it's important that we keep that tradition alive. So it's part of our, um, so, uh, building and maintaining trails. One of our partnerships is through Southwest Conservation Corps. And they are the crew that built the McPhee Overlook Trail. So coming into the county, um, building out trails, um, and, um, expanding and enhancing assets for us as a community. And they've, they've been working in our county for quite some time, but they're, so they're one of our main pathways that they're gonna create internships, paid internships, for middle school and high school age kids to get out there and get involved with trail systems or the school gardens or outdoor learning labs at Fozzie's. And that's what we're talking about where we can really change, um, through mentorships and internships that are paid and even volunteer hours. They can maybe envision a different, um, pathway for their future. And ex, we're gonna expand what they, um, maybe currently understand about what they might wanna do as a future career.
Just real quick, you said that about the ag that, you know, that eight percent or, I can't remember the percentage yet, but.
Eight percent.
Yeah, so we have a program, for example, they just started chapter last year in Mankas, FFA.
Which farms America.
And the, the reason that the school let them was that they had to provide the beef for the school. And so they are growing three beef last year and then they're growing three beef. Would that be something that could be incorporated into this?
Yeah, I, I work closely with all the FFA teachers in our county. Um, and both the Sharp Force up in Dolores County too. We bring students out to our farm, uh, do hands-on projects, uh, you know, that involve, you know, beef and hay production mostly. It's kinda where our farm is right now. We're transitioning to diversify a little bit, but those are our main operations right now. So we've got lots of hands-on out.
I had two of those FFA students, I actually met them for breakfast and, and, uh, I think there's fourteen of them in Mankas. But they said that they went through five, um, uh, what do they call them, a leader?
Advisors?
Advi, five advisors. So they're struggling with leadership.
One of the things that happened as an outcome of the build-out of these school gardens, the FFA classes throughout the county are at their highest level of enrollment to date.
Nice.
And it's directly correlated to their work in these gardens and their elementary schools and their middle schools. And it's translating into participation in those FFA programs in our high schools and to keep those programs going.
Yeah, that's an interesting.
For me, if I'm a rancher and a farmer, um, we, we're dying as an industry and these 4H and FFA are more important than ever. If there's any time that they were more important, it's now.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's really when we surveyed the community during that planning grant phase that Amy mentioned in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, what we really found out is that kids who don't live on a farm and don't have that agricultural background are still really interested. And again, I think because of what Amy said, you know, about the, their participation in that school-to-farm program and, in the classroom and in the, in the school gardens, it's really created that interest and that demand that you're talking about. Yeah, 'cause there's missing generations. I mean, the average age of farmers in our county and across the country is sixty plus. So we're gonna see a lot of turnover of farm, family farms and ranches here pretty soon.
Well, what they're trying to do, like that Mankas district is, so once they, they sell the steaks and stuff and then they use the, the.
Ground beef and roast.
Ground beef for the schools. And then they want it to where they, they're self-sustaining, where they can buy the three head every year. And they take turns feeding them every day.
That's a neat program.
It is.
I never, I'd never heard of that.
They just started it last year.
And the school gardens with the element of producing, uh, and then providing to the schools is a major component.
You bet.
Well, what they, the reason they contacted me is because they wanted to, they need funding. They've got enough funding from last year for one, but they need funding for two more of the steers or hevers. And we have a program where, uh, well, we did it in the past for other organizations where we sell a calf over and over at Sel Barn. But the problem is, is drought. The prices are awful and it is, if there's timing in life, it is the wrong time to ask these farmers and ranchers to. It's just, it's too tough. So if there was funding another way, like one point eight million.
That's a lot of funding.
Yeah, so, so this, this grant from Great Outdoors Colorado really provides more capacity to continue doing what we're doing, making those connections through the school-to-farm program and through Fozzie's Farm and, and other things that we've got going on that are really ag-focused in our county. And that's what's unique about our grant across the state. There was no other, uh, organization or community across the state that applied for so much money for agricultural-related programming. They're really sort of separate in that way. And so, you know, this added capacity is a real game changer for me.
And we were, we were the second largest grant in the state, um, in this Inspire Initiative through GoCo, Great Outdoors Colorado. And also every other coalition throughout the state was funded at a fifty percent level and we were funded at a seventy-five percent level. So the support and the recognition that what we're doing is, um, healthy, working, um, working together. Twenty organizations to come together for this kind of, it's pretty amazing. And since, um, so then we go to the programming phase. So this is where we engage with kids and, um, what we, what we keep saying is we want every kid in every zip. We, we want kids from all over this county to be involved in these programs, have access to all of these programs in whatever way that they see fit. Whether they're interested in mountain biking, whether they're interested in agriculture, whether they're interested in camping. Um, the city will put on programs for, over the summer that families can sign up for. And the gear will be provided, the transportation will be provided and some leadership as well. Um, so it's just really, it, it goes farther than every kid in every zip because it influences their families as well. So it's really, um, robust programming. So the steering committee, like we said, it started with eight organizations and it started in twenty fifteen. And the planning that went into this grant was so detailed, so organized, that then when we received funding, the one point eight million dollars is spoken for. Every organization had to provide a scope of work and a budget for the next three years. So we have the opportunity to shift focus and change and adapt with things that are working well, things that might need to be revisited. But those, uh, funds are spoken for again for the next three years. And it's, um, there's a lot of oversight, there's a lot of support for these other organizations. And, um, we'll see the results. So the coalition members are large to small organizations. Government to nonprofit. And again, all working together for over two years to make this happen. Um, this is a little bit about our grants, which we just spoke about. Um, and we have the opportunity to, uh, the potential to create thirty-five paid jobs for youth in our community. And.
Turn this through your period.
Yeah. And part of our, part of our biggest goal is sustainability. So we don't want this to stop after three years. We'll continue to work towards grant funding, sustainability within each organization and, um, so that we can continue this work. And we have the potential to serve over fifty-four hundred youth in our county again.
Mary Dawn, I had a question with your, with your Mankas students, your FFA students in Mankas, providing meat to the schools in Mankas, is that what they do? Does the school system help reimburse them for the, the money that they weren't gonna have to spend buying, buying their meat products somewhere else? Do they, do they help fund these kids?
I don't know.
You don't know that detail?
All I know is that they had enough left over to buy one steer. And they needed the money for two. So if they did that one year, they figure, well, next year we'll have enough money for two. And then by three years, they would be self-sustaining. And then the money would go back to that 4H program in Mankas. What I, I tell you what set me off is when they sat down, how well-spoken these girls were. And when they said, everybody pulls their weight or we don't want you in our organization. We don't want any freeloaders. You either, everybody is a team. We don't want you joining just so you can go to the stock show. You join to help feed this steer and do all the work. And that's.
Really committed, really committed young people.
Yes.
So that's an overview of our organization. And then Tom, um, we heard about the possibility of an event called Monazuma Outdoors. And so we kinda saw it as an opportunity to collaborate.
Good. That Get Outdoors?
Yeah, so this, this event coming up on June sixteenth is really a great opportunity for, you know, engaging families and, and kids and youth in our community with the outdoors and making them aware of all the opportunities that exist in our community. But it's also a fantastic opportunity for the Inspire Coalition to really share with the community and do a big outreach event and say, not only, you know, is a forest service an option or the river or, you know, being outside on a farm, but here's a whole new range of, of activities that are available through the Inspire Coalition. So really saw this as a great partnership and a way to kinda get the word out and just raise awareness and, and let parents and families know what new opportunities are available as well. So it seemed like a really perfect fit and the timing is, is ideal, really. Right as summer, right as the summer's kicking on, so.
I think it's a great coalition.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
I see the list of sponsors that, that, uh, you already have, Tom? Did you get this list of sponsors put together?
I did send it to Melissa and, you know, if you'd like to, well, the sponsors were, um, and those were organizations that were originally proposed, well, with some deletions.
For activities, did you?
For activities, right. If you scroll down, there was an email I got from Jay.
Is it this one?
It had twenty, might be the first one, first or second one?
No, it's on down, it's a twenty.
Those are the sponsors, yeah. That's it.
There you go.
That's the list, and if, if you wanna take a closer look, there, there you go.
Yeah, so those are all our.
Those are the organizations that are involved.
With, with, uh, Inspire Coalition, okay. So who is this first list, Tom, that you've got? Co-Capelli, Alpaca, Raffs, Low?
Those are, those are probable sponsors for the.
For, okay.
For the sixteenth, June sixteenth.
For the Get Outdoors function.
Right. A few have been contacted, but we really haven't pushed that yet. There's still time to do that.
Yeah.
Could be like water bottles and hats and things like that.
What time of year is it?
June sixteen.
It's a Saturday, I believe. Yeah, and, and we have the park. Uh, the city is also, um, partnering with this as well, so we'll have the park there by the right side. And, uh, that's where the event is planned to take place.
And I think what the Inspire Coalition can bring to the table to make this partnership really healthy is, uh, you know, Amy's wealth of experience in event planning and organization and, and kind of wrangling all these details and making this a really successful event. And I think, you know, what, what the county brings to the table is, you know, that name recognition across the county. So we're not just talking to kids and families in Cortez, but we're talking to Pleasant View and Mankas and all across the county. So really having that wider audience is kind of where we're looking to partner with, with the county on this.
Where is your, um, farm at?
It's in Lewis, it's on County Road W. And, uh, yeah, it's a beautiful spot. Love to have you out there someday. You know, through this grant, we had some, some funding available, like Amy said, to kind of enhance that place. Um, as well as doing more programming out there, more on-farm programming. We have a, we have the opportunity to build a, a, a small little classroom building. We're hoping to break ground next month, actually. So, uh, just so we have a place to kinda do some lessons before we go out on the farm and, and do some field work.
Is there outside stuff or is there a greenhouse?
Not yet. I mean, hopefully down the road, a greenhouse, you know, is, is in, is in the works.
Could be a classroom, be the greenhouse?
Well, we have money to build a dedicated classroom that we can use year-round. It'll be heated and cooled. Um, right now, we're kinda limited to, you know, spring, summer and fall months, uh, to doing programming out there. We haven't had any brave souls volunteer to come out in December yet, but, uh, it's an option, but.
Warmer than it's been this December, I'm surprised.
Come and work out your jam.
This should be something that you co-opt with the CSU Experiment Farm in Yellowchuck. You guys, I mean, maybe you already have worked out that relationship, but you, that should be a, that should be an awfully good working relationship for both of you.
Oh, yeah, no, we've talked, and Katie is, the, the, yeah, the new, uh, research director out there. Yeah, we've talked a lot with her and she's been out to the farm numerous times. So, yeah, got lots of ideas, tons of opportunities out there at the farm. What's, what I've enjoyed most about doing programs out there with kids is that, you know, in the classroom, they're sitting behind a desk, they're taking notes, they're learning about, you know, conservation or science or, you know, water or whatever. But they come out to the farm and they're doing it.
Sure.
They're not learning about it as a concept, they're.
It's a hands-on deal.
They're hands-on, they're experiencing it, so.
That's a good job.
And I think that's really the theme of the whole Inspire Coalition. It's not just telling kids it's, it's important to go outside, but we're gonna give you the tools, we're gonna give you the equipment, we're gonna give you the, the leadership and the, the, the capacity to go outside and enjoy it with your families. Cause I think, you know, as you guys were talking about, you know, the, the safety issues facing our schools and the, the issues with bullying, you know, I think, you know, there's, there's just a missing piece in our school system, you know? And, and really it's, you know, we're, I'm a former teacher, I taught for ten years. You know, I think having the, having kids really engaged with what they're doing in school is the secret, I think, to kind of preventing some of these issues. I think if we can get kids involved and passionate about what they're doing and what they're learning about, that solves ninety percent of problems, I think. And the way we do that is by getting kids involved, not just with taking notes and reading in a book, but doing hands-on things and experiencing what they're learning about.
Is part of this one point eight million gonna be used to build this classroom that you're talking about?
Yep, a small chunk of that, yeah. So, uh, the land conservancy and Southwest Conservation Corps and the Pinion Project and, uh.
Interesting. And would part of the money be used to build the, the greenhouse? I keep going back to this because my grandfather told me when people first came here, they built their, their barn first and they built their house later. And so I, I don't understand why you don't build the, the greenhouse first. You put the classroom and the greenhouse. And then you don't need, I mean, you can go to Four Seasons, it works. I mean, they've got their office inside of the greenhouse.
Right, well, we vetted that, we talked, we have a, we have a really broad, diverse group of people who are advising us and, and how we move forward with this classroom. Really making this a, we're really making the farm a community asset. And so we've been engaging with the Soil and Water Conservation District, um, you know, partners who are experts, you know, we worked a lot with Bob, Bob Redd. Oh, yeah, yeah, it was discussed and we thoroughly vetted that. And we really felt like having a permanent classroom that was more easier to climate control, just made for a better visitor experience. But we're definitely gonna incorporate greenhouses into our, you know, our teaching methods and, you know, in our opportunities.
And you're gonna get them out of the classroom, but you're building them a classroom on the farm.
The classroom, the classroom is a plan B. So right now, if it rains, the kids run for the bus. The wind blows sideways, the kids run for the bus. And they have to line up to use the porta potty one at a time. Just the simple things like that make the class.
Show them, show them the value of some of the things that we all pay for granted.
And part of it will be bringing the farm to the schools. And then part of it will be bringing the schools to the farm. We'll build out four new spaces, uh, in, one at Lewis Elementary, uh, one at the high school here. Some of these campuses that we haven't, um, touched upon yet, Manaw. So it's, um, it's, it's more than just a classroom space at Fozzie's. It's enhancing the classroom spaces at the elementary and, um, middle school with the, part of the work. Um, they have a great greenhouse which they utilize for classroom space. But we'll also build out more classroom space so that they have whiteboards where they can kind of do some planning and things like that. So it's just enhancing those outdoor classroom spaces. And then identifying those, um, pieces where they can't have a farm, uh, at Swoz's maybe, but they can come to the farm and participate still, so.
Yeah, I'd like to invite you guys to come visit the farm too anytime. We'll be building a fence here in a couple of weeks, so, uh.
Know how to do that, drive a fence staple and stretch barbed wire.
Not yet, but we're, we're figuring out what we need for that so we can apply this year and have the materials ready for next year.
Okay, sounds like a good, sounds like a good coalition you're forming up here for that.
Well, thank you for your time.
Tom and Bonnie's helped too.
They need to be right in the middle of that. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Michael, I have to get everything done. Casey McClellan's not coming.
Oh, isn't he?
Something else come up today.
Okay.
So, um, James has his, a couple of things and the only thing that Leanne had on the agenda was signing up.
Does he need to get going to the Rotary deal?
I didn't know what time he has to be there. Do you have ten, fifteen minutes? Okay.
Oh, okay.
Is that a free lunch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My day to buy too.
So if James holds a start, you're not gonna be able to get.
Sound that real quick?
Yeah.
Blue pen and everything, huh? Blue pen and everything, huh? You think it's?
I built the classroom and the greenhouse. Can't walk to the Forest Seasons, just have to walk.
You're in Dropbox?
Yes.
Did, um, do you like statements times feel okay with you guys?
Yeah, it was great. How about you?
We had a long discussion about it. You can go to Walmart, buy a fourteen dollar clock that will change automatically, but you can go to Ford Motor Company and buy a seventy thousand dollar pickup. And I make a couple days. You can buy one for fourteen dollars and it'll fit itself.
I think you ought to call Ford and tell them that. Tell them they need to talk to Walmart and get some of that technology that Walmart's got down there in Ford. What's this under?
It's not.
Okay.
I can't make it move.
Okay.
I don't know how to. Jim? I'm like, this won't move. Oh, there it goes.
Oh, there we are. Yeah, there's that decking here.
I don't know how to scroll through.
Well, they've got all that tore off the top and everything. Oh, man, they got that tore off and, yeah.
How do you scroll to the next?
Yeah. Once they got their consultants here, they really got it going.
Just open each one. We could just go through a couple of them and that's probably good enough. I just wanted to show the commissioners that, um, the work is going on out there and. Yeah, it all looks, looks like all the, somebody took all the wood, is what it looks like.
Yeah, they did, man, they moved a lot of that off there.
I set up, didn't I? Jeez.
Well, the easiest way to see it is just drive out there east of town a couple of miles and you can walk right over there and look, look right at it.
You can read one of the panels and they'll tell you the whole story. That's what I was looking for, was that. Okay, so.
There we go.
So this is in the process right there, and as you can see, they're putting, they put decking across the, uh, the steel in between each one of the wooden, uh, pieces, the, the kind of the cradle that holds that thing up, and they're just removing the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, uh, they'll be, uh, working on the steel and the, um, uh, concrete. Uh, there's a little bit of that, uh, once you pull that wood off, there's some of that that was, that would be exposed, they didn't, they didn't get to the last time. So that'll all be accessible to them and they'll, they'll start working on that here pretty quick.
There's the labeled, labeled timbers, huh?
There's all the labeled timbers, they know exactly where they came from, and so they'll know exactly how to put them back together. And same thing with all the cradle braces there.
They did a job.
Yeah, it's like they're doing a great job.
And so Bert's really trying to, to source everything out as best he can locally, if possible. This is some wood that's up there at Stoner Top. So he's been, been making a submittal through our, uh, um, owner's rep, and they're going to run that by the state and see if this, this wood at Stoner Top will, will meet specifications. And they think it will, it's, it's only got one knot and it's, it's about a two inch size knot. The rest of it's pretty small stuff. So I, I think we've got a good chance of being able to tap in possibly to, to Stoner Top. The difficulty is, is, uh, having the paper trail with, with Stoner Top. But, uh, our owner's rep will help with that too, so they can help document that wood from beginning, from source to, uh.
From where it was cut, uh, right through the mill to down on the place, huh?
The whole thing, yeah, to validate that it's the appropriate type of wood. Uh, so anyway, as, as you can see, things are progressing up there, we won't have to belabor that. Um, I would ask for a motion though, uh, to, to sign the, uh, contract with the National Trust for Historic Preservation, uh, for the, the Flume Reconstruction Grant. Yeah, so I guess that's the only thing that we've got. I've got a fresh copy here for the commissioners to sign that.
You gave us this morning, yeah?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any discussion, James?
No.
I would move that the Monzuma County Commissioner sign the, uh, let's see, what's that called?
The National Trust for Historic Preservation.
National Trust for Historic Preservation, uh, Agreement, uh, for the Flume Project for two thousand eighteen.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, an agreement with the National Trust for Historic Preservation for the Flume Project for two thousand and eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Blue pen, Casey, you want that?
Does this have to be in blue?
Well, we, I'm just trying, trying to make everything in blue these days, they.
Because surely if you don't do it, they will say, oh gee, that was wonderful, but we needed it in blue, yeah.
So with regards to the Rico West Dolores, uh, just got word from Casey McClellan, he is not going to be able to make it in today. Um, also, uh, had a couple of calls from Derek Padilla this morning. And one, one of the things that, uh, he is, is, uh, asking the county to consider is, uh, a prescriptive easement at the, uh, Bear Creek Trailhead. The reason for it would be, is that there are three properties there that, that the Morrison Trail transverse. And so the Morrison Trail is an RS two four seven seven trail, it's on an eighteen ninety nine map. Of course, it's not been adjudicated yet, as we, we know. Um, but if the county were to entertain the thought of, of trying to, to, uh, look to get a prescriptive easement to cross those three parcels, then the non-motorized, uh, Morrison Trail would be, the Forest Service hasn't got any problem with using motorized on that. So that would provide the link. Um, in, in a sense, it would sort of replace Bear Creek. So Bear Creek is also on that eighteen ninety nine map. And, um, so, I mean, I, I asked him just point blank, is there any scenario in which we can keep Bear Creek motorized? And he flat answered, no.
There's going to be no motorized on that Bear Creek Trail?
No motorized on Bear Creek.
At all?
So that is, that is gone in every scenario. And I asked him, what, is there any way to, you know, what, what scenario, you know, could we think of that would bring that back? And the answer is no.
RS two four seven seven to bring it back?
So that, that is our, our only choice probably for Bear Creek.
Yeah.
Uh, Morrison is kind of the same, same situation, except that they're not objecting to that, and they'll allow motorized on that. And yes, from the motorized perspective, I think it would provide a link.
Well, that prescriptive easement, would it be the one that he's talking about for the Moore Sword Road where it would take out the language of non-revocable?
No, no.
So I think the county is allowed to, um, file a court action to get the court to declare that there is an easement. Uh, and so basically, prescriptive easement is just, uh, a certain person, maybe the county, saying that this has always been used by the county or by certain people, and so there is an easement there. Uh, so we have a right to keep doing it. We've never done one, as far as I know. Um, and usually the minister will do this and say, you know, I always use this to get to my house, you know, I've gone through your property, and so I have an easement. Uh, an easement exists whether or not you go through the court. Uh, but then if somebody fights you on it, then you might even go through a court to see how the court basically adjudicated and say, yes, there is an easement that really does exist. Uh, and which is similar, as I said, to the whole two four seven seven thing, two four seven seven law. And basically, everybody's, uh, interpretation of it other than the United States BLM and those Forest Services that, uh. You don't have to get an adjudication if it's a two four seven seven road, it's a two four seven seven.
Road, mhm.
So, um, but, but yeah, I do think that I've looked into this issue before, not for this particular, not for Bear Creek or for, what did you say, Morrison?
Morrison.
Uh, but I do think the county can legally file a court action to get, to declare that, that this easement does in fact exist.
What properties does that cross?
What is that property they were going to buy?
No, this is up, no, this is up on Calico.
Which one?
They bought those mining patents up on Calico.
Yeah, that'd be it.
From, uh, Richard Lincoln.
Oh, Richard Lincoln?
Well, I, I don't know that Mr. Lincoln owns it.
No, the, the, those mining, those mining patents up on.
Oh, and this is a separate deal from that.
Yeah, right, that's why I was, I was explaining to him that that's a different deal.
Who are the landowners here?
Let's see, there's a Fitzwater, um, one of them, I can't determine, but we have nothing in our records on that. So there's probably some kind of glitch with our records.
That's that doctor?
Yeah, probably is. I can't remember what this other guy's name was. But there are three parcels, one here, here, and here. And basically, the Morrison Trail come, comes through here. And it connects to the Bear Creek Trail. The Bear Creek Trail comes up here, and it looks like some of that may be also on, on private land also. And then the Bear Creek Parking Area is right here. And so the concept would be to, to link the Bear Creek Trail with the Morrison Trail, then they'll allow motorized on this trail. Um, in every scenario, they're saying this trail, no motorized. Um, we could go back to the other slide, maybe we can explain.
Do any motorcycles on the Morrison Trail now?
I don't know if they ride on the Morrison, uh, at this point. And I'm thinking they probably don't unless they're coming down from the top side, because what we heard is from the bottom, um, the individuals, um, will allow foot traffic to go through, they'll allow horses to go through and mountain bikes, but no, um, no motorcycles. In fact, one of the proposals here was, was to negotiate with the landowners to see if they'd give us an easement to allow motorcycles, but people would have to push the motorcycle through, they wouldn't be allowed to, to ride. You have to dismount and walk.
How far are we talking about it?
Yeah, we're about a thousand feet is, if, things are looking like it's, uh, that's what I scaled off of the map, let's put it that way, so. And John, I don't know, you know, if every single person up there, you know, because there are three parcels involved, and it could just be one parcel that, that has got that kind of restriction, so. Need more information, really.
Be wore out?
Yeah. So what the Forest Service is proposing is that they could, could possibly build a connector trail over here, which is this red trail over here to, uh, Hillside Drive. That would provide that linkage, and then you could ride on up that road, get to the grindstone trail, and, and further on up in there. Um, the alternative, though, would be to, to see if we could get that easement here for the Morrison Trail, that would provide the same, same situation.
What land is that, is that private land or?
Uh, well, about right here is where the Forest Service starts. So this is all Forest Service here. And then there's just a stretch of private land right down there at the bottom.
And the, what do the private landowners feel about this trail?
Well, they're, they're the ones that have already placed restrictions on motorized and say, okay, you can walk through it, but we're not going to allow anybody with a motorcycle through.
Those that, they don't know what is restricted, so I don't know.
Yeah, we don't. The, the thought at this point, uh, the Forest Service floated out was that some of the non-motorized groups go approach these folks and say, hey, this is a good deal, uh, we've negotiated, really on your behalf for this. Um, you're going to, we're going to take the motorized off of, off of Bear Creek and we're going to put it on the Morrison Trail. In exchange, we're just asking for you to allow the motorcycles to cross your, your property here, uh, on that easement, on the, the old Morrison Trail. And so far, of course, um, I don't think anybody's had a chance to go talk to this, these landowners. But the thought was that it'd be better coming from the non-motorized community than having it come from San Juan Trail Riders or somebody like that. So I guess I would, would probably tend to agree. I mean, I think while the Guardians or San Juan Citizens Alliance went and asked for that, um, for the benefit of, of motorized riders, um, you know, maybe there's some, some room for negotiation there. No, don't know until you talk to the landowners, though. Anyway, that would be, um, what the Forest Service is, is proposing is that if we cannot get any, any access through here, then they would consider putting this, this access road in here. So I think it's really coming down to what happens at this point for the Bear Creek Trail.
Access road or ax, or trail?
Yeah, access road or the trail, yeah. Uh, we, you know, there was some talk about using Little Bear Creek here as, uh, as a connector. And I think in all scenarios, that's been dropped at this point too. Um, they would just prefer to keep all motorized out of Bear Creek if they could. Um, San Juan Trail Riders seem to be okay with, with this scenario, um, it at least provides the, the connectivity. Um, they would prefer probably using the old Morrison Trail. And I think all the way around, everybody would prefer to just use an existing trail versus having to go in and cut new trail. So, you know, for that being what it is. Um, then, so for the rest of, of the Rico West Dolores, I think.
Do we need a decision now?
I, I wouldn't say we need a decision now, okay, I want to give you some more information too. So after talking to the Forest Service, I asked him, okay, so where are we at with this objection period? And he says, oh, by the end of the day here, you should have a letter that says they're going to extend the objection period. So we may have some more time that we can work on all of this. So, um, I'll kind of keep you close, as soon as that letter shows up, I'll, I'll throw it to you. But my understanding is they're going to extend it by at least ten days. So that would give everybody a little more time to negotiate, for one thing.
Did Casey say, does he still want to visit with us?
I think Casey would like to, to visit with you. Is he here?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
It's his.
So I, I think he would probably like to visit with you.
Casey's got some very strong arguments.
Yeah.
For the why he believes and feels the way he feels.
Yeah.
And a lot of it comes from dishonesty and, and out and out, uh, according to him, and he has recordings of lies that he's been told by the Forest Service and, and, uh, and I want to hear him out, because I, I, I tell you, I think as we keep doing these travel management plans, all motorized and stuff keeps decreasing. There's never any gain, it's always, it's always a reduction, it's always a reduction, it's always a reduction. And, and I've got numbers in here from the San Juan Trail Riders of how much this takes out of the motorized access to the forest. And, uh, I think, I think we should listen to Mr. McClellan's objections. I don't know why.
He had some, uh, his kid had a presentation at school or something.
But, but I'd like, I'd like for the commissioners to hear Casey's side of this story, because I think he's got some very definite, some very valid reasons why he feels and, and, um, I think these, uh, trails that show up on that eighteen eighty six or eighteen eighty eight map, uh, will be, will go a long way to the RS two four seven seven argument for some of these and, and, and will take away some of the argument for the Forest Service, trying to, trying to reduce the, the access on especially Bear Creek. And, uh, I'm just, I, I, I think, I think the other commissioners and John should hear, hear Casey's side of this before we.
Sure.
Before we make any decisions about anything.
Yeah, because it.
You know, my argument is this, they came up with a twenty five dollar tag to put on four-wheelers side by side, uh, to raise funds to help, for the trails. Now, when they started that program till today, we must have ten times as many side by sides, four-wheelers.
Yeah.
And motorcycles. Because I tie this in with the registration for the boat muscle. This is a question, is there more trails or less trails?
Less, without a doubt, without a doubt, there's less.
So how in the world do they think they're going to put a twenty five or fifty dollar tag on their boat and think that they're going to have the same results to open more lakes?
Yeah.
The way you do that is you change the allocation for the lottery funding for the.
And start paying, and start paying people, the inspectors, yeah. Yeah, it's all about how you appropriate your funds.
Yeah, they never do it right.
No.
Okay, I will try to reschedule Casey to get.
Please do, James, and, and do it before, hopefully before our objection period is, is completely expired.
We'll try to get him in next weekend, or next week. Um, I'm sort of thinking, um, you know, as we're ta, talking about all this, if the BLM's not going to take all their time, we have some time for the public lands piece in the morning, perhaps that would be a good slot to get him into.
Yeah, good, try, try.
He should be in there at the same time that they.
Yeah, be a good time.
They could be here.
Sure, yeah. Now, Forest Service says they will not be here that day, they're, that's spring break for them. We'll, we won't see the Forest Service anyway, but that's.
Uh, are we on spring break that week?
Dolores is this week.
Are we taking spring break?
Dolores is this week and Cortez is this week.
So we get two weeks, we get Dolores and Cortez, we're off for two weeks.
I don't know when Mankas is.
So the Forest Service is off on spring break, huh?
Yes, I.
Derek is on spring break.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it looks like to me that, um, you know, if we're looking at like Bear Creek, we're, we're probably down to two four seven seven on that one, but, you know.
Maybe it's time, maybe it's time to draw a line in the sand with it.
It is the classic case too, where.
This, this might be just the perfect time to say, you know what? Guess what?
My preliminary thoughts are that that's going to be more effective trying to do a prescriptive easement.
I do too. I do, too.
Prescript easements are, um, only gonna be for what they were used for historically. And so, you know, if they were gonna motorize bikes on it, then it's not a prescriptive easement for their bike.
Yeah.
You know, in, in my personal conversation with the, the Tim Cook, which is the, the chief of the Forest Service up there in DC, was they're more receptive to local control of these trails. RS two four seven seven, they, they realize that they've got a mismanagement problem severely and that there's gotta be a corrective action, and that's to the local government. Because who knows better what's going on in our forest than the local government?
Boy, that's, that's refreshing.
Yeah.
That's a refreshing attitude.
So, for that Morrison Trail connection, I think we, you know, Forest Service is pushing us to, to ask for the prescriptive easement. But that's, that's on the eighteen ninety-nine map, too. That's every bit as much RS two, RS two four seven seven as Bear Creek.
There you go.
Maybe more so. I have a feeling there may be more, more information associated with that particular trail.
So, it looks like it's been on Bear Creek for years, right?
Yeah, yeah. And probably for, for Morrison. I've never ridden it, Larry Don, I don't know for sure.
So, why now? Do they not want a lot better?
Well, take a guess.
My, uh, my sense is, is, is a lot of it has, is coming from trout unlimited.
Sure it is, and backcountry horsemen. And all of them are talking, they want more and more and more closed down, more and more and more closed down. The backcountry, not horsemen, but outfitters and hunters or what, what is that organization?
Well, there was kind of a, yeah, there's kind of a mix up there.
Marion, a guy named Marion represented that, yeah.
But I think for Bear Creek, it seems like, uh, the water quality seems to be one of the, the big issues. And it's one of the, you know, the trout population, I think, is one of the big concerns that I keep hearing there, so.
How many times did a trout cross the, the creek?
I don't know. I, I haven't, haven't actually gone up and ridden that one, so. Part of the reason I don't go ride those is because they're there. And, you know, if, if, if I thought they were going away, I'd probably get up there and ride them a bunch, you know? But, you know, I mean, I just, you know, don't feel compelled. I mean, if something's there, I can, can access it.
Whenever you feel like.
Yeah, I just don't feel that driven to get up there and, and do it. Like, a lot of people feel the same. I've talked to a lot of, uh, other riders, say, oh, yeah, you know, it's great. I've never ridden it. And I, you know, I'm glad it's there, and someday maybe I will, but, um, anyway. So, I think that concludes my, my report for the day. Yeah, the, uh, the objection period has taken up quite a bit of time last week.
Boy, yes, they have, man, changing the schedule. Well, and then, did they ever, did you ever get an explanation why they changed the day?
Yes, yes, I got a big, long explanation on that.
What'd they give you?
So, basically, it was that they were trying to make it work for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. For the ones they wanted it to work for.
Yeah, sure enough, yeah, so.
I'll tell you what, Ben. Did you express to them my dissatisfaction in their slanted way of doing things? Thank you.
So, um, anyway, yeah, it, you know, they took it to heart. I had, had to call from two of them.
I bet they did.
Uh, okay, I will let the commissioners know as soon as we find out, um, how much farther this objection period will go. So, but on, on, uh, on a positive note on it, I, I really kinda felt like there was some pretty good momentum between the Wild Earth Guardians and the San Juan Trail Riders. And that's sort of a little bit of a separate issue than what we've got. I mean, I think we've gotta evaluate Casey's, uh, proposal kind of separate. It, it looks like they're two different tracks take here, and I don't know which one's gonna yield us the best.
Yeah, they're gonna be two different, divergent ways to go. And, uh, but, but what we're hearing now, the Washington head office, and they're gonna look at some of the things a little differently. Maybe now's our time to establish and start establishing some things.
I mean, it looks like to me, if, if they adopt that plan, you're probably stuck...
Oh, yeah.
Pursuing RS two four seven seven on some of those trails anyways, and Bear Creek in particular. Now, they did, interestingly, give Ryman Creek back, which, um, is also on that eighteen ninety-nine map. Um, and there was an alternative, and this is part of the good stuff, is there was an alternative to reroute that trail. And both the San Juans, uh, both the Wild Earth Guardians as well as San Juan Trail Riders said, yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense to, to reroute and create new disturbances. Uh, let's just take another look at the, the one we've got. Maybe there's some things that we can do to rebuild that trail on some of the difficult stretches and actually do some physical modification to help that become a more resilient trail. So, the Forest Service said, yeah, okay, that makes some sense, and we'll, we'll, so they threw that back in, so. That was good, you know, I think hopefully we get, get through a few of these things and, and some positive come out of it. And then we may still have to just fight over it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
With that being said, we've already done, signed the final plat, Casey's not coming at one thirty-five, so if we could just finish our reports and...
Okay.
And, uh, do a public comment, then we should...
Okay.
We'll have to come back after lunch.
All right.
I don't have anything more to add, but I do, I'll probably talk to Commissioner Supla separately, just kind of update him on what we talked about in the executive session on DC. We talked about mainly Route Forty-one issues and a couple other issues that have the ADA thing and...
Personnel.
John, I think you need to report out on that executive session, and I have four things here that you talked about.
I'm looking up what, what we talked about. It was Route Forty-one, um, an issue, uh, personnel issue and social services. It's been ongoing, um, in an ADA thing that, uh, about next door. Um, that's all I have that we talked about, so I don't know the fourth is.
What was progress made on any of them, or...
Um, they were informative.
What was the Kinder Morgan update? Is it what Leslie brought today?
No, I did, I, we didn't talk about Kinder Morgan. Actually, everything I said about Kinder Morgan was just in public. I, that was, and so that was before we went into executive session. Um, and it wasn't much, if I recall right.
Yeah.
And so, um, the other things were, um, were informative as far as, um, legal issues go. Uh, there's not much reported in that. There, there weren't, I mean, there was no action on, on anything. If, if Commissioner Supla wants to meet again in executive session, then we will. If there's anything that we need to talk about, commissioners.
Just kind of ongoing stuff.
Right, but I, I mainly want to update him on, on the, on Route Forty-one issues.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Commissioners.
Uh, just real quickly, uh, went to DC, about died in a plane ride there. Um, they, we ended up trying to land twice. We were, the plane was on the, um, news, it was flying sideways.
Coming in, coming into that area.
Uh, last week, last Friday, they had seventy mile gusts. And, um, so we had a, I believe that it was a woman that saved her life because a man would've tried to land it. Tried to land twice, and then they pulled, half the people on the plane got sick. And half the, and then she said, we're going to Cincinnati, Ohio, and there wasn't a person that complained. We, uh, I presented the Electronic Logging Advice Resolution with Commissioner Bolton to the Transportation Committee. They, that first meeting that they had that day was three and a half hours. You present the, the resolution, then they have a discussion, and then they have a vote in the afternoon. In that three and a half, so we gave it, there was three resolutions. We gave this resolution, the presentation. The next three and a half hours, because there's a call out of Commissioner on that, that committee said that that resolution was brought up over and over again as the discussions went. That afternoon, we gave, uh, we were brought up to the mic to be asked questions. A Commissioner from New York City, uh, fought against it, and believe it or not, but another Commissioner from New York City put him to rest. And she said, you know, and he said, it's a safety issue, and there shouldn't be an exemption, exemption for agriculture. And she says, well, I'm seventy years old, and I just drove fourteen hours here, and I didn't get no rest. So, tell me what the difference is on safety. Uh, because there is no rules. You can drive, you can get in a half a million dollar motorhome, and you can drive that thing for fifty hours if you want.
That's right.
One of the greatest things there, we, we went to the White House, we met with, um, with, there was the Department of Energy, uh, Department of Interior, Department of Transportation, all of the main departments. They came, it was a three and a half hour meeting again, and I gotta tell you, it was one of the most intense meetings that I've ever had. They get up there, they talk for ten minutes. If that, they ask you questions. Within another five minutes, there's no bathroom break. There is no difficulty around. Like, you go to these other boards, like, well, let's take a ten-minute break. These people are there to get some work done. But the main, one of the main speakers was Trump's advisor, his name was JD, always famous. A lot of the Democratic Commissioners came at him. It, it was a very heated debate, and he was so well spoken and to the point, and he had points that could not be rebutted. It was very refreshing. Actually, the most refreshing thing was, is these Commissioners, some of them, they're ten, fifteen years. They had this to say. They said, well, I gotta tell you, I can't stand everything that's going on. But that was, there was more said and done in that White House briefing in three and a half, uh, hours than we've had from all of the other Presidents put together.
Wow, wow, that's...
I also attended a press event, uh, for PIL, Paying the Low Taxes, where we stood in front of the White House, and there was multiple senators and congressmen that gave, um, presentations on the support of PIL. And then I was on, I'm on the Rural Action Caucus, and so on this Wednesday, uh, we went, last Wednesday, we went to the USDA building, which is pretty amazing. There's more security in the USDA building than the Senator and the, and the Congress put together. I can't figure it out. I don't know what was their support. But that's where the Forest Service Chief is housed.
Yeah.
And, um, the USDA has seven billion dollars that, that, that we can get funding for. We have got to, to, to use them for anything, you know?
Find some way to have...
You know, for, say, that somebody wants to put a solar farm, if somebody wants to do a business here...
Isn't that what Sally Clark will help us with?
That's exactly what Sally Clark, that's, she's the State Director.
There we go.
And two hundred and twenty billion dollars have gone out on loan right now. There's a lot more, but I'll...
They're a big bank.
Very interesting, very productive, uh, five days.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, and Tim Cook, I brought up the Dolores River Road and RS two four seven seven. And I brought up the third easement. And I said, you know, you got this easement, and at the very end, it says it's a revocable easement. And so, he, he was at the podium, I, I was really close, and there must have been four people in there. And I said, so would you be willing? And I talked about how he said, well, the only way to get the, the Forest Service road there is we have to sue them. Call the friendly lawsuit. And I said, there's no such thing as a friendly lawsuit, and it's only a mechanism except for this third easement. And at the bottom of the easement, it says this, it's revocable. And so, I said, can you take it off? And there was just silence, you know, would you take it off?
They're willing to revoke it, yeah.
Where it's not revocable. And he's like, meet me outside, and so...
So, you know, I did take it off on the one that we...
Represented right, but whether the, whether they think they can let it be removed or not.
So, you met him outside, and?
We, I brought Commissioner, uh, Martin out of, uh, Gertfeld County, because he has a, a bill that they're scrolling through right now in Congress, uh, about RS two four seven sevens. For twenty years, that all the counties have a free ride. They go in and they pick which roads they can prove that are RS two four seven seven. And then the Forest Service and the BLM, they can have a debate, but there's gonna be a decision made whose road that is, period. After the twenty years, there's no more. If the county did not go out there and say, you know, that Bear Creek should, should be an RS two seven, on twenty-one years...
Too late.
Too late. It's Forest Service is forever and BLM forever. But there's a twenty-year period, and then this fight would go away for good. About who owns the road, who doesn't own the road.
You'd get to claim, claim your ones, you know?
Who owns the trail, who doesn't own the trail.
When does that twenty years start?
As soon as the bill passes.
Soon as the bill gets passed.
Okay, that's in a bill now, that's...
Yeah, if that bill passes this year, it'll start.
Thank you.
So, that's all.
Good, thank you. Um, I attended a couple of meetings last week. I had a AAA meeting in Durango, and our, uh, finally got some federal funding coming through. They were scrambling hard over there to keep, uh, keep the food service, our, uh, uh, congregant meals and our home-delivered meals going, but they finally got, the feds have finally gotten some, some money through to them. Uh, had a workforce board meeting on, that was on the seventh. On the eighth, I had a workforce board meeting in La Plata County. And, uh, they're doing everything they can under this OIA, and, uh, funding their, funding is a big part. I think they're, they're very concerned that there's gonna be a, uh, Wagner, Pfizer, and one other of the big grant funding mechanisms are gonna be cut. And they just don't know how much, so, uh, they're kind of walking on pins, pins and needles to, uh, make sure they stay afloat and keep operating. Uh, I had a meeting with the, uh, DWCD on, uh, Thursday night, the eighth. Uh, they reviewed the M and I water for use in the Toyac High Line Canal, uh, for us to be able to pump out of that and use our, our riser out here by the fairgrounds to use M and I water for, for roadwork. And, uh, we're gonna have, in April, we're gonna go down and do a walking tour of the, of the canal in different places. And, uh, the DWCD Board was very, uh, they were very amiable to what we talked about. Don Schwent and, uh, and their attorney, uh, I don't know their lawyer's name, but Don Schwent, uh...
Where's he from? Does he work at Cortez?
N- I don't believe he is. I, I don't know if he's Durango or if he's Denver. I'm not sure where. I'll have to find that out. I, I do not know where he's from, but I'm sure he's not a Cortez lawyer.
I don't wanna disrupt the flow of your presentation, but I probably wanna go and get your little walking tour.
Okay.
Just 'cause I'm kind of heavily involved now.
All right.
Walking tour might be on the twenty-first. We might need to double check.
Okay, well, well, I'll make sure, I'll get, I'll get ahold of them.
Brandon, and make sure...
But I'll make sure you're, you're involved in that.
And I think that would be March twenty-first instead of April.
Instead of April, do you think?
April is, the April twenty-fifth is their meeting in the office. But April, the tour, he said, was on the twenty-first. I'm thinking March twenty-first. But I'm not sure Brandon was talking really fast.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that straightened out. Yes.
Could you go back to the DWCD M and I water and explain? I thought the issue was that the county owns twenty shares of MBI water, ag water, and we can't use that on the roads. So, now how are you gonna, are you gonna switch it somehow, or buy DWCD?
We haven't worked those details out yet, Ellen, if we will trade with, uh, with, uh, DWCD our ag shares for some M and I water. Uh, it, the M and I water just sits out there and, and is not, is not consumed. It's, it's, it's excess out of the project water, and it's not... So, they've been leasing, they lease some of it to Toyac. They lease, at least part of it to the tribe, like twelve hundred acre feet to the tribe. So, yes, there's a, there will be a, there will be a definite consideration for the use of that water. We don't know for sure yet what that will be, if we'll trade them some ag water, or what we'll do, or if we'll, or if we'll have to pay them for the M and I. But it's, it's going to, in the long run, reduce our costs tremendously of truck time, driver time, all that, uh, wear and tear, even if we work out a lease on that water for the, for the period. We're gonna use it, but, uh, but we're not, we're not there yet. We're not...
But it's not a matter of having to go and re, I don't know what the word is. Uh, change, change the status of your MBI shares from...
No, this won't have anything to do with our, our MBI decreed water, that twenty shares of ag water. Yeah, I don't, you know, and I, and I really, I, I think that's something that the commissioners and our, our attorney are gonna have to look at. That if we're gonna be restricted to using municipal and industrial water for our road surfaces, if we can't, you know, that's why we're trying to get these decrees from MBI, because in some of those decrees, John and I saw that they had, they had a myriad of things that, that ag water could be used for certain, certain parts of it, could be used for a myriad of things. Although they were saying that they don't know that those are the final decrees that MBI has that may be more restrictive. So, so there's gonna be a process in finding out if we can use some of MBI's decreed water for industrial, and they consider that an industrial use on the roads. But, but to solve the problem more rapidly and readily is, hopefully, this four-member board that sits outside of the DWCD Board that governs the operations of that Toyac High Line Canal. They're the ones that will make the decision whether or not we can use M and I water out of that Toyac High Line Canal.
Will you buy the M and I water?
What's that?
Will you buy?
I don't know. That's what I told Ellen. We're not to that yet. We have to make the decision first. As if the canal board, of the governing board, will allow us to do that, then we will get to the place where we'll talk about what kind of a lease or a trade, or what we do with, uh, uh, compensation for that. But, but we had a very positive reaction from the DWCD Board, that they were all, uh, very, very supportive of, uh, and Godwin, I think Godwin Oliver is the gentleman that's on the DWCD Board that sits on that, uh, Toyac High Line Committee. So, so we'll see. We'll see how that goes, but it was an interesting meeting. Things, things were moving our way that night, which was nice. That's all I got.
I, I forgot one thing.
Yeah.
I went, went through a presentation over opioids, and the, the Trump administration is proposing, um, guidelines for... I went, went through a presentation over opioids and the, the Trump administration is proposing, um, guidelines for, to cut the use of opioids. And they're coming up with these guidelines for, say you have a knee replacement and they figure out that, they do a study, well, knee replacement is two weeks where the pain is. After two weeks, you're done, unless there's a special circumstance and they're gonna, you know, because they gave an example of a community of, my gosh, it sounded like it was the size of Duff Creek and they were-
In West Virginia, was that the one in West Virginia?
Maybe it was West Virginia.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I can't remember how many.
Hundred thousand tablets of, of Percocet and some other Oxycotton were dumped into that community of twenty-seven hundred people. It was like, I mean, it was the most ungodly thing you've ever heard in your life.
And it was a lively debate because some people, you know, there were people that was, well, my pains last longer and they had, which reminds me, on any so- shoulder surgery on, uh, it, it's not too serious, but I'm not gonna miss any time either, I don't think. It's, it's gonna be on a, in the middle of the week, um, for a torn labrum arthroscopic surgery, a hip and a third. Um, I've got a pre-op, the reason, another reason I just thought of that was that on March twenty-first, I do have a, a pre-op appointment with the surgeon. Uh, hopefully that's not when our walkthrough is, or at least my pre-op isn't at the same time, but I'm gonna have a sling on for two to six weeks.
But did this come, happen to come from bicycle riding?
That's what I asked.
Is this in any way, shape or form tied to?
White lie, white lie. It's old age. It's my body wearing out.
You don't know anything about old age yet, my friend. You're not even in the neighborhood.
It's, it's a labrum.
That's an odd muscle to get tore up in.
Around your shoulder and I dislocated my shoulder before a couple of times, a long time ago and, um, I think that continued activity and old age now is making the labrum, uh, just, it's looser and just more use.
More unstable.
It's all, it's just shredded and so it pops out all the time, so you just wanna sew it.
Oh, yeah.
Sew it together.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like that big a deal.
I've got needle and thread.
You what?
I've got a needle and thread, I'm just not sure which one I'm supposed to be sewing together.
Well, I've, I've watched a couple, uh, YouTube videos on it, we might be able to.
I'll pass. Can we move to public comment?
Okay, yes, and we'll now, uh, move to public comment. Anybody here like to comment, uh, Commissioner? Going once, going twice?
I think it's all been done.
All right. Hearing none, I will entertain the motion.
Not resign. The church. What am I thinking?
Said that, boom, second it, and we're outta here and he's done. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we, are we going to still the Mangum's, uh, uh, tour?
But does it have to be at two?
I'll bet we can get out there earlier.
Well, we might be able to, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna hang around for an hour and see nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for the-
I gotta show you something. They printed twenty-five hundred of these for the, for the commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Two outlaw.
Oh, look at that, who's the gal?
That's Lila, she's the commissioner on Flagstaff.
Flagstaff, oh my gosh, you, you're getting there, bro, you're getting there. You're getting that DC recognition, buddy. They're getting, getting you spread around.
No, they were talking, they printed lots and lots of them. Understanding was that through the therapy, I was gonna stretch it back out and regain full range of motion, but they did say that they-
Who's turning this up to five?
It's mine.
I think it's mine.
Was it? Who bought last time? Baxter? No, Lambert did, didn't he?
I thought I bought.
No, you're, 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 you weren't here last week. Yeah, you weren't here last week.
And, and it's, it's-
That's the answer.
I thought if you've got brothers at school down-
Call around.
You say, like, teachers, which ones you wanna get, you wanna carry out, will eighty or a forty-five in here protect your daughter?
You'll get, you'll get a five hundred dollar monthly if you do it.
So, yeah, yeah, you're a teacher, but you're also gonna be a protector too.
It went wild. You'll have to tell me about it.
I don't know all of it.